Everyone set? All right, I'm going to call this January 3rd work session to order. Roll call.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr. Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Koller.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
White.
Ms. White.
Saylor.
Here.
Yes, here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're going to start with public comment, and one of the things we're going to... Oh, I'm sorry. I do apologize. I flipped over. Section 1.04, approval of the agenda, a move to approve the agenda as presented. I have a second. All in favor? Ms. Mares?
Kim Mares is an A. I would like to motion to make an abundum to the agenda. Excuse me. In light of the quickly changing circumstances, I wanted to move to add to Transition Plan Version 3, a student masking exemption form pursuant to the law. Unless I know.
Is there a second? I have a second by Mr. Keenan. Question? Yes. Mrs. Mares, I'm going to attempt to repeat what you said. It's hard to hear you. Move to add to Version 3 of the Health and Safety Plan a student masking exemption as to the law?
Correct. Pursuant to the law.
Pursuant to the law. Of course.
Mrs. Mares, I wonder if you could help us to understand exactly what it is you're recommending with respect to the exemption form and the pursuant to the law aspect of it?
So, I am also would love some help from Mr. Subers, but I'm just, I'm concerned with, we even received an email today from a parent. I'm concerned that parents who have difficult situations with their students need help. And so, really, this is all because I just wanted to have a conversation about this and see how the district, is there something we could do that would open up the mask exemption form just a little bit that's in line with the law so that those families that are really struggling with their students that can't get a doctor, I'm hearing that the doctors are struggling to give mask exemptions, that what can we do to afford a little bit of help to those few families?
Mr. Subers, are you able to go over again what you went over yesterday with the law states?
Sir. Thank you. I believe that the district's exemption requirement, which requires a doctor or medical provider's certification to be submitted, is permissible. However, in addition to that avenue, a parent of a child who has a disability could request an accommodation under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. And then, that request would be evaluated by a school team pursuant to the procedures and requirements of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act.
I'm wondering, Dr. Russell, if administration has a thought about possibly what could be done to help some of those families that are really struggling? That's really what I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah. Thank you for the additional information, and I appreciate the efforts. The administration has wanted the same for families who are really struggling, and in some cases, has indicated accommodations through a 504. And the reference you're making to the family is one that I am aware of, and we have put some wheels in motion already to support that family. We do have some things, some steps that we can take that are well within the Health and Safety Plan that's currently approved, and also have the opportunity and the ability, again, through conversation and a meeting, to place the accommodations in a 504 plan. So, as I mentioned last night, I wonder if we can wait even just this week to consider that adjustment to the exemption form. I am very interested in discussing that more as a board, and considering that, in the meantime, we are taking steps to work with families like the one that reached out to us today to accommodate them because of the difficulties they are having out there in the medical community, and working closely with Mrs. Lewis on that.
Dr. Russell, from my dad, I think Mrs. Mares is attempting to get this to be placed on the work session today to be voted on, so it can be voted on by the board next week.
That is correct. I'm trying to, correct. I'm trying to go through the proper channels and not just introduce it next week. That's exactly right, Mr. Saylor. Thank you.
Hold on one second, Dr. Russell.
No, in that instance, you can have a motion to amend the agenda with the clarification that it's not a request for an action item, it's just for an item to be placed on the, as an action item for next week and discussion for this evening.
Right.
If there's a majority of the board in favor of that, that's, would be acceptable.
Dr. Koller.
So, just to be clear, we're voting on adding it as a discussion because we can't vote on a form that doesn't exist yet. Is that correct, that we're just voting to discuss it?
You're voting to add it to the agenda today?
As a discussion item?
As a discussion to add to the works, to add to the meeting next week.
I think we, with that clarification...
No, you're good, because the clarification...
Yeah, I mean, I guess we'll ask both you and Ms. Mares to confirm that clarification.
Yeah, she did just, right, and it's clarification. I'm remembering what she said, "to amend the agenda," is what she said. We weren't clear on what we were doing.
Okay, and with that, and you accept that clarification?
Yes.
Any other questions, discussions? Okay, so just to clarify, the vote, if it, obviously if it fails, we move on to, going back to approve the agenda. If it passes, it becomes a discussion for the board to have today, and, well, actually, a discussion to have the board to have next week. Or today to have next week.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
If it's an amendment to the agenda, as I understand it, it would be placed on this evening's agenda, it would be available for discussion, but not action.
Got it.
Because the clarification was that there would be no action on this item this evening.
Got it, and it would fall under education, and it would probably go a 4.05.
And although it's probably not necessary under the Sunshine Law amendments to justify a reason for it, because we're not taking action this evening, Ms. Mares did indicate that, you know, the reason she's requesting this amendment is recent communications from parents and ongoing developments with respect to the COVID-19 situation.
Correct. Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Mares.
Aye.
Mr. Saylor.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Dr. Campley.
Yes.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Now.
Mr. Fountain.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Dr. Koller.
Yes.
Mission passes.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, so we're good. All right, then going back to public comment, we're going to start with the public comments.
We do have to approve the agenda. That's correct.
All right, I moved to, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the additional amendment? Is there a second? A second, Mr. Fountain. All in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it. Move on to public comments. We'll first start with the public comments that were submitted through email to read aloud. And Mr. Dorr, you'll be reading in, since Mrs. Mares is virtual today, Dr. Russell will have a timer, very much what we did yesterday. Each person gets three minutes, and they should have a name and a municipality.
So, there were some comments that came in after 6:30 yesterday. They will be put into the public record from last night's meeting. If anybody wants to see them, they can go onto the PV website. First comment is from Dr. Jean Hallis, from, actually, resident of Skidback. "As a former board member and board president, I'm writing in reference to a comment made by Mr. Rowan Keenan last evening that greatly concerns me and has been voiced to me by others as a matter of both statutory law and policy. Mr. Keenan publicly asserted that masks were a form of child abuse. That's a powerful accusatory statement. If he truly believes such a statement, then he should also know, as a board member and a practicing attorney, that he is mandatory, is a mandatory reporter. He's required to report by statutory law said abuse within a limited period of time. The clock is quite literally ticking. If I recall correctly, the reporting is mandated within 72 hours of discovery of the suspected abuse. Has Mr. Keenan in fact reported out to the necessary authorities? Does he truly believe what he has asserted in full and open view of the public? If so, then he has a duty to report. Otherwise, Mr. Keenan should issue a full retraction and explanation to the parents and citizens of Perkyomen Valley." Next, Kim Taylor. She's a resident of Perkyomen Township and has two children currently in PV High School. "I watched the entire board meeting last night and was completely thrown off by the comments that Mr. Keenan made. Mr. Keenan spoke about child abuse and that having our children wear masks was child abuse. He does not speak for me or any of my friends who strongly disagree with his statement. Does he even know what child abuse is? Clearly, he doesn't, and needs to be educated. The definition of child abuse, according to the Oxford Dictionary, is a physical maltreatment or sexual molestation of a child. Wearing a mask is not child abuse. Common sense, which clearly he is lacking, would prove that, unfortunately, I know too much about actual child abuse and the ramification it leaves on the kids. I work with several kids and have been abused by their parents, family, and loved ones. I can honestly say that every single child that I work with is in therapy, getting the help that they need to overcome these terrible people that abuse them. They lost family members who they thought were on their side, only to find out that they were not interested in helping the situation. Their lives were turned upside down from their abusers. Yet, every single child that I've worked with wears their masks in school. I am an educator, and I have never had a student complain about wearing a mask or equating it to child abuse. I left the meeting last night completely disgusted at the thought of having Mr. Keenan decide what is right for my child. He has absolutely no common sense and was a bully, quite frankly. It was appalling listening to him stretch the truth and downright lie. This behavior needs to stop right now. Our children are suffering due to the actions of people in our community. We will never all agree on what is right to do, but as board members, you took an oath to represent all kids, and your opinion should no way cloud your decisions. If you cannot do this, please remove yourself from the board so that we truly have the best people deciding our children's future. Thank you." Bridgette De La Pante, Schwenksville. "This has gone on long enough. Our kids have the right to have the option to wear or not wear a mask. Most of the kids are socializing outside of school without them. Wear that is optional for them as well. My child will not be wearing a mask anymore. It is interfering with his learning and self-esteem. You have no legal right to mandate it. These kids deserve the choice to wear a mask. Majority of them are not wearing them outside of school and have multiple social groups of friends, where social distancing is pretty much impossible. For the parents who live in fear, they have a choice to mask their child. The virus is not going to end, just like the flu. We need to learn to live with it, and the choice of whether to wear a mask or not. If they were not wearing masks during the holidays and socializing, then there's no reason to wear them at school, where there are more precautions taken to keep them safe. Standard rules during flu season: wash your hands, don't touch your face, cover your mouth and nose when coughing and sneezing. Our kids should have a choice." Christine Hamilton, Skidback Township. "Thank you for taking all the new information into account and making a decision that was hopefully, that will hopefully help keep our schools open. May this vote be more common ground and be auspicious beginning to a new year." Michael Nizzoudi, Schwenksville Borough. "This is causing havoc. The school district, keep going back on decisions like this, is very destructive to our kids and our enjoyment to attend school. The masks affect my son's attention level. He can't breathe in it, and he can't concentrate." Tracy Tweedy, Collegeville Borough. "I'd like to start by thanking those of you who voted for the updated Health and Safety Plan last night. However, I have some concerns based on the discussions last night and after seeing the updated guidance released by Monco OPH today. It seems as though contract tracing is now completely impractical based on the new definitions that includes not only the mask status of those around a positive individual, but also the quality of mask wearing. This is impossible to ask of teachers, who should be spending their days worrying about who is learning new material and who is properly wearing their mask. A sensible decision here would be to just require masks until the positivity rates drop. But since some of our board think they know better than the lawyers who are hired to guide them, the board's answer seems to be to rip up the Band-Aid and let the germs fall where they may. Dr. Russell stated last night that what happens in our schools impacts our community. Allowing the mask mandate to expire on the 21st without so much as consideration of where the positivity rate stands at the time is reckless and puts our community at risk. If our children are exposed to COVID-positive students in the school that is unable to contract trace, then we put everyone we came into contact at risk. I will reiterate what I said last night. 12- to 15-year-olds are not yet eligible for boosters, which puts that group at greatest risk. Unless these kids are able to get boosters in the next seven days, they won't be protected when the mask mandate expires. That's not allowing for everyone who wishes to be vaccinated to do so. Please consider adding an agenda item next week's meeting to reassess the Health and Safety Plan based on case counts at the time, at that time, and on the availability of boosters for 12- to 15-year-olds. Lastly, please consider updating the guidance to allow for 6th grade chorus concert on January 19th to be held masked so that those students who are performing for a class grade can do so safely. It's ridiculous that every other chorus in the district was able to have safe concerts, but the Middle School East 6th graders are put at risk because some of you think you're smarter than the experts. Please put your feelings aside and make a decision that considers the impact of our entire community. You were elected to serve your community, not yourselves." Beth Roberts, Lord Frederick. "Dear Mr. Keenan, it is with great consternation that I listened to your rambling diatribe during last night's emergency board meeting. Not only was I disturbed by the questionable self-confession of your traumatic and ill-handled childhood circumstances, which really needs to be brought to the attention of your parents and a therapist, not in public, but I also a bit taken aback by your unfounded accusations that parents who mask their childrens are child abusers. Considering the fact that the majority of the parents from which you heard support universal masking in school, and the additional fact that you are a mandatory reporter to CPS as a school board member, I would imagine that you are quite busy this morning, reporting all those parents who you publicly accused of abusing their children. I would imagine that you are buried in bureaucratic paperwork today, making reports on the parents who displayed the diabolical desire to cruelly protect their children." No, no call to CPS? Is that because you realize the actual hyperbolic and politically motivated insanity of your accusation, or because CPS, which is up to its eyeballs in children who are actually starved, beaten, burned, broken, neglected, is too busy to deal with your ridiculous temper tantrum? Is it because CPS is actually a functionary of the county and observing the masking protocols in their own office, or maybe because your accusation is not only a Republican parrot-headed talking point of the lunatic fringe, but also an absolute and egregious lie? How freaking dare you, Mr. Keenan. You sit there in your ineffective and barely compliant gator and accuse parents who have lived for two years in varying levels of anxiety and sacrificing to spare their children the disaster of long-haul COVID, or any kind of infection, of being accused, of being child abusers, because your opinion-based conspiracy theory bovine excrement failed to convince the public that we should just abandon any mitigations and lie down and catch COVID. For Q. Are you serious? I have to hand it to you, Mr. Keenan, that you at least had the honesty to take a stand, even if it meant standing on the heads of the public, unlike the gutless, confused, and uninspiring cop-out of your fearless president Mr. Saylor has proven. One more time, his crashing incompetence and his lack of leadership by relinquishing his voice and letting the rest of you take up the slack and actually make a decision that he is clearly unable to make. I suppose that it was politically expedient to abdicate the responsibility of going on record with his stand on the matter, which is important to someone with the political aspirations and ambitions he has. However, I do believe that this maneuver may blow up in his unsuspecting face, as spectacularly as dry ice in a ball jar, when his lack of decision-action is remembered by both sides of the question, when it comes time for the constituents to stand in the voting booth. I guess he's learning that governing requires a lot more than barbecue and beer at the duck inn. It's all fun and games until you actually have to lead. It's all a big party until the day comes and you have to stand up and do the right thing. Mr. Keenan, I'm just an old lady. I have no children in the district..." And that's the last comment.
Why, thank you very much for that. Dr. Weston.
Good evening. Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. I thank you for this opportunity to comment. I would like to commend the school board on their decision last night to endorse the district's updated Health and Safety Plan to include masking in schools through at least the 21st of January. Given the increasing incidence of COVID infection in the county and in PV, this should not have been a difficult decision. However, the discussion around masking has been heated, to say the least, and I commend those school board members who are able to focus on the safety of our students and staff. Like many others who are at the meeting or listening to the meeting, I was surprised by the board president's abstention from voting. Mr. Saylor, in an email to me yesterday, you said you were not against mask mandates, per se, but that it was your personal belief that school boards did not have the authority to issue a mask mandate. In last night's discussion, it was made clear that you do have the authority, but you still declined to vote. Like the song says, "If you choose not to decide, you still have made a choice," but the thing is, the community does not know what your choice was. I hope that you'll speak more about your decision to abstain in an upcoming president's report, because I think the community deserves to know where you stand on this matter. While last night's vote to continue masking was, I think, a good decision, the Health and Safety Plan, as I understand it, currently has a hard stop on masking on January 21st. And I hope there will be continuing discussion around this point, as all evidence currently points to incidence rates and transmission in the county and the district still being high at that time. I would urge you to look at the transmission and incidence rates as your primary determiner for changing mask policies rather than vaccination availability or opportunity. As of today, by my calculations, the incidence of COVID infection in Perkyomen Valley School District is the highest that it's ever been, 582 per 100,000. While the transmission and incidence rates are high, the risk of infection spreading into schools will remain great as well. As I've said before, what we have been doing in this district has been working to keep students and staff safe. As long as it's working, don't change it. Don't fix what isn't broken. Thank you.
Wendy Ledford.
My name is Wendy Ledford, and I'm a secretary at Schwenksville Elementary. I am still longing for the day where the school board's focus is on the education of the students at Perkyomen Valley, and it is no longer on forcing medical guidance on anyone. I pray we are getting closer to this every day. I would like to share my favorite quote from the school board meeting on December 13th at the second hour, 17 minute, and 37 second mark. at the second hour, 17-minute, and 37-second mark. Mr. Keenan's response to the eight additional sickties granted to vaccinated employees while not offering the same benefit to unvaccinated employees was, "How do you do that to your employees? How indeed?" I have watched this over and over again, and it warms my heart. I and other unvaccinated employees were finally being heard. I want to publicly thank Mr. Keenan for listening and questioning this on our behalf. From the first vote to forced assurance testing on unvaccinated employees, to the resolution offering those added sickties, I felt disrespected, devalued, bullied, discriminated against, hurt, angry, scared, frustrated, belittled, and resentful. I'm so thankful the forced assurance testing is finally over, and I'm hopeful that the district will think long and hard before trying to discriminate against any group in the future, in the future, and that we can all heal from this going forward. I would now like to share my least favorite quote from last night's special board meeting. I abstain. While I do not view this transition plan as a compromise, I do hope that this plan can be followed without any waiver in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Tim Kavanaugh, Trap Borough. I was kind of surprised by the vote last night, considering I thought the whole purpose of voting in who we voted in was to flip the board for parent choice. I want to thank Rowan Keenan for what he said last night, because I think that took a ton of courage. One thing I think I heard him say was that forcing someone else to mask their kid is sick. I'm sure many scoffed at and thought he was just being dramatic. I'm going to tell you why I agree with him. The statistics are easy to find. The children are at incredibly low risk of dying from this virus. They have a better chance of dying on the way to or from school than dying from COVID. Some make the argument that we are masking them to protect the adults, but I think masking kids to protect adults would be unethical, even if it worked. Nobody has any real data that shows masking works any better than not masking. I hear a lot of emotional stories predicting the horror they believe will happen, but nothing solid. It's all fear-based guesses. People talk about having to go virtual, people dying if we unmask our kids, like as if it's a foregone conclusion. There are schools all across the country that haven't enforced masks since the beginning of the pandemic and are doing just fine. So I do not buy for a minute that masking protects the children at all. A kindergartner should be thinking about learning how to count and do basic things that will help them develop in life. We are brainwashing these kids to believe that they're responsible for everybody else's health. Not to mention, we're brainwashing them to think if they don't wear a mask or they accidentally get a germ on somebody that they're going to kill people. That seems like a lot of weight for an 18-year-old, let alone a five-year-old. Let the kids be kids. You're messing up their heads and you don't even realize it. Everybody listens to these experts, but people don't think that maybe these experts care about just COVID numbers. Maybe they care about their careers. Maybe they won't miss a wink of sleep if their decision to fight COVID numbers now makes your kid a mental case later. I wouldn't agree with anybody giving experts final decision-making control over their own kids, because I think it's just shallow thinking. For you to try and force someone else to give total control of their kids to an expert to mask them is definitely sick, in my opinion. I think it's beyond sick.
George Haskins? Hankins, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you for the time to talk. Good evening. George Hankins, Trap Borough. Thank you for the chance to take the time to talk this evening. Yesterday, I was not able to attend the meeting due to travel out of state, but I tuned in to hear the proceedings. First, I want to publicly thank Dr. Kohler, Mrs. Evans-Brockett, and Mrs. White for responding to my email over the weekend, considering you received many, many. Even if your opinion's different from mine, I appreciate the courtesy of the reply, considering the volume you received. As I have said before, when I've spoke publicly at these meetings, I am a teacher in a neighboring Montgomery County School District. This public school, I've worked for 23 years, and these last two years have been nothing but the hardest I've ever experienced. I am a father of one child who attends South Elementary School. Sorry. At the start of the pandemic, I notified my family doctor in the district about her inability to wear a mask for physical, emotional, and psychological reasons. She was given a 504 plan, and after further visits to CHOP and their feedback, she now has an IEP. My child was treated with dignity and respect by the administration and her teachers. She has attended school mask-free since October of 2020, and though not perfect at times, the school has adapted and respected her needs and even apologized for any missteps along the way. Mr. DeAndrea deserves that admiration. I've spent a lot of time over the last two years seeking studies and details regarding masking. My situation is very unique. Most recently, the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health published an article about masking largely in Germany. The study revealed relevant adverse effects of mask in numerous disciplines. In the paper, it referenced psychological and physical deterioration, as well as multiple symptoms, from what was labeled mask-induced exhaustion syndrome. The study, as I am paraphrasing, noted that oxygen intake was greatly reduced and was argued as a cause of many of these findings. So I ask, should I feel lucky or blessed that my daughter has a life-altering health impairment and was recognized for a need for an exemption by wearing a ma, for not wearing a mask by our family doctor and upheld by CHOP? Or should I think about others, like I often ask? For you see, my daughter is still banned from some activities and businesses in our area, yet I'm still asked to think of others, so I do. I think of all the parents who have children who don't have daughters of my needs, and they're subjected to the universal masking at one place and one place only: school. As a history teacher, I know common sense is the reason many people declared independence as the revolution it began. So I use common sense. I see people seeking our tests for the virus that they're vaccinated and boosted for, and they don't have any symptoms. Common sense tells me that says a lot about masks and vaccines and mandates, but I am wrong if I want my child, or any child, to attend school because there's reduction in oxygen flow. Common sense tells me that is true. Common sense tells me that COVID will be here for a while, and decisions regarding masks need to be made, and we need to have exemptions, and I appreciate the board's discussion this evening. As I approach the end of my thoughts, I want to make sure you understand that maybe some will feel that I don't have common sense, but those who can't, I guess, teach, but I am a lifelong learner, and I will tell you that, that I am continuing to learn, even if my hypothesis and those hypotheses are not accepted or even true.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
Alicia Taylor, Perkyomen Township. I didn't really prepare anything tonight, but listening to the emails from the "Hate Has No Home Here, Has No Place Here" emails to you, Doc, Mr. Keenan, I apologize for all that berating. You were great. What you said was fantastic. You stuck up for our children. You, um, you wanted parent choice, and I commend you for everything you said last night. I'm really disappointed in all the other people that, the Flip4PV, that said they were going to stand up for parents, have parent choice, and you didn't do it. So, um, child abuse. There's many different forms of child abuse. I'm a nurse. Every two years, I have to take, just like you do as teachers, you have to take child abuse, get your child abuse clearances. I have to do it too when I renew my license. There's physical abuse. That's not the only kind, which everyone, whoever read the Oxford Dictionary of abuse. There's emotional abuse. There's verbal abuse. I just looked up, so, from the Pennsylvania Child Welfare Resource Center, interfering with the breathing of a child. That's what masks do. If you're causing any physical harm to a child, there's kids with rashes, there's kids that get RSV, which is not usually found with older kids. This is what's happening. This is what you're doing. This is what you voted for. And you go around, I know you guys have been out without masks on, I know you do it. That's what child abuse is. It's not just physical. It's not burning a child. It's not just hitting a child. It's mental. Tommy, don't you have a degree in psychology? Right? That's what your degree's in? I took two classes in psychology for nursing, maybe three. I know what child abuse is.
Hello. Thank you for letting me come and speak in this meeting. I'm Trinity Linville. I'm a student in PV High School. I know I'm not alone when I say that many students hate the masks, as you all know. As it's been said, many masks that you distribute are ineffective in stopping COVID, as people in the medical field has proven over and over again. If we even wore masks to school and someone had COVID, it wouldn't do much at all, depending on what the mask you wear is. If people want to wear masks, in my opinion, they can. If they find it concerning too, then they should get an N95 mask, and that helps a bit better than the ones that you give out. It's expensive, yes, but that's why those people can choose to do it themselves. You can't just make everyone do the same thing. As the saying goes, one shoe doesn't fit all. As a student in the high school, I have to say that it is depressing going into school. I don't know most of the people's faces at all in school, and I'm pretty sure you know that facial expression is a lot when talking and expressing something. I wasted two years to COVID, and it might not be as concerning to you adults, but since I'm in high school, I have my future to look after, and I wasted two years with COVID with that. Us teens have been getting more depressed during the COVID, and it's honestly terrifying to witness. I'm one of the exemptions in the high school, and I'm glad that I've qualified for it, because if it weren't for an exemption, I would have panic attacks all day, all day. I don't even understand how you can wear a mask right now. It's hard to breathe. I really hope you do not take that away from any student, child, who is in these schools. Please make the right decision and make masks a choice. Don't subject teens and children, because they are the ones who actually pay the price of your decision, please vote for the choice. Thank you.
Dondy Fury, Trap Borough. I don't really have anything prepared to say today. I just wanted to come up, after listening to some of the emails, things that people were saying to Mr. Keenan. I personally respect anybody's opinion, someone who wants to wear a mask, someone who doesn't want to wear a mask, someone who feels a certain way about it, someone who, it doesn't matter to me. I think we all should be able to decide what's best for ourselves and for our children, whether that comes to our personal lives, our medical information. And a lot of times, I think that should be private, for me personally. When someone's on this board and comes up and shares their, their opinions, I don't, I don't think that that means it's fact. I think it's okay for you to have an opinion that it feels like abuse to you, because some parents, people, I have people reach out to me when I speak at these meetings. I don't like speaking. I hate public speaking. I never did it before. What forced me to do it is seeing kids crying, coming home with headaches, you know, kids that are developing RSV. There are some doctors that say, oh, you have to wear the mask. There are some that are very against it and said that kids are getting sicker. Kids are getting RSV. I have parents that have reached out to me that I don't even know. Teachers reach out to me when I don't even like being on Facebook. I'm on this platform just to see what's going on in our communities. I have teachers email me, Facebook message me, "Thank you for speaking out. Kids are suffering." And, and it's like, parents are just supposed to sit back and not come to these meetings, and then week after week, nothing changes. Who's supposed to be their voice? The conversations aren't happening on this stage about the, the negative effects of what our children are experiencing, and I'll tell you one thing, they're afraid to talk about it. They're afraid to share it at school. And I heard Meg Lewis say they're afraid to have these mask exemptions. They are, because I know kids that have them, and they're afraid to take their mask down. Not only because of what kids are saying to them, but because of how teachers are treating them. I've had parents come to me telling me that their kids have anxiety, they're afraid they're going to get everyone sick, they've developed phobias, they're depressed, they get brain fog from wearing the mask all day, they can't think, they're struggling in school to perform well in their tests. They're getting more cases of strep and respiratory infections, skin disorders, panic disorders, kids that have vomited in their masks, walking to the nurse with vomit in their masks. Why aren't we talking about this stuff? I have a friend whose child couldn't, was seeing double vision because the lack of the air that she was, that she was getting. She was so dried out in her sinuses that she was texting her mom from school because she was having trouble seeing her paper. How many doctors you think are just willingly writing these exemptions? Because they're not. And I'm also, I only have a few more minutes, I'm just curious if you're feeling safe up there, Mr. Door, because you're pretty close to other people. And last night, you voted to mask all of our kids in school for the next couple weeks. I still believe it should be a choice. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on. Student liaison report by Mr. Seibel.
Hi, yes, good evening. Before I begin, I want to thank the student speaker who came up. I don't personally agree on every single point, but your remarks were impressive, and they were appreciated. You're a very good speaker. Now, moving forward, I want to apologize in advance, should any of you find my words distasteful or disrespectful. However, the plethora of online and in-person conversations Matt and I have had with students, regardless of political opinions or thoughts on recent topics specifically, have warranted a less than lovely report. A few weeks ago, Matt and I came before the board requesting that you move forward in your new or continued roles on the board with grace and dignity, respecting your colleagues and ensuring the community does the same. The community disruptions have been handled more than actively since, which I would like to commend. However, board interactions have become something of a performance rather than a discussion. Yesterday evening, we saw a meeting discussing one topic that lasted over three hours. That in and of itself isn't necessarily to be criticized, but the content of the meeting is. We saw community engagement, but then almost an hour of board discussion over which there were only several real speakers. One board member spoke for 20 minutes on the topics of his childhood, his political campaign, and eventually wrapping up with how masks were child abuse and disrespecting a significant portion of the board and community. In fact, the words he used to describe individuals who believed masks to be the best way to keep our students and faculty safe and in the building were sick and terrible. To call his colleagues in the community this was disrespectful to the board, the student body, and the community he was talking to as a whole, and it set an example for our students that was far below subpar. Now, I believe these statements were influenced by emotion. I can't hold it against him, but it's imperative that any comments made by the school board are made with care and thought in the correct setting. Mr. Saylor, I'd like to start by saying thank you on behalf of the student body for the way you handled community, community disruptions. The respectful forcefully was impressive and appreciated. However, you did not show the same qualities when it came to managing board discussions. When a board member speaks on topics not pertaining to the discussion at hand, or does so in a way that is blatantly performative in nature, please shut it down. This relates to both statements and responses by other board members. As you stated, the board meeting is not a hockey game. The goal is not to get your supporters to cheer, and when people work to do so, it, it should be shut down. Finally, this is addressed to those who continually respond harshly and excessively to statements made by their fellow board members. Statements last night and after my previous speech on this topic unfortunately demonstrated this widespread phenomenon on both sides of the proverbial aisle. I keep hearing both in-person and, and social media individuals respond to inflammatory statements with even more anger. The goal of these discussions aren't to argue. If someone takes a stance you dislike, please approach it tactfully, not angrily and disrespectfully. All the students are seeing in this meeting are two sides arguing over which opinion is more righteous. That's not the point of this body, and it's setting a poor example for the students and community. Now, I know this has been rather pointed, and I genuinely apologize if it's upsetting. I won't go through every grievance every student who has messaged me has. That's not the point of this. The point of speaking tonight is simply to make you all more clearly aware of how I, much of the student body, and a large portion of the community feel. We have seen people arguing, repeating the same points in emotionally charged language. I've received texts calling these proceedings disgusting and saying they're acting like children. I disagree, but they point out that the polarization you complain about is being furthered by the way you approach these divisive topics. I respect you. Mr. Schaefer, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight, he respects you. We enjoy contributing to the board processes and working with each one of you. However, you do need to earn the respect of the rest of the school, the student body and the community. I'm not asking for responses now or later defending your actions or admonishing myself or others. I only ask that you reflect and move forward with respect and dignity based on how the student body will perceive your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seibel. Well, that's all. Well, that's a lot to take in. Happy New Year, wishing the entire PV community much success and happiness in the year ahead. Let's see. I'll keep this short. There were some questions that came in through email. A lot of people had a lot of questions on why I abstained. Mr. Subers and I had a conversation about that. It is not 100% clear that a school board has the right to have a mask mandate, and because of that, I didn't vote for it. I abstained from voting because I don't believe we had the right to make the vote. That's my opinion. Everyone else decided to make their opinion, and that's perfectly fine. No one's right, no one's wrong. Would you agree with that, Mr. Subers?
I would agree that, as stated yesterday in response to Mr. Keenan, that there has been no court of competent jurisdiction that has ruled on the issue in a manner that would be binding on the school district. I do reiterate, though, it was and is my and my firm's opinion that the board does have the authority to impose that.
Correct, absolutely correct. The other point was that I should have limited Mr. Keenan's speech. There is no policy that allows a president to stop a board member from talking if they don't like what they have to say, and that's not our job. Sometimes, we're going to have really difficult conversations, and that's part of the real world, that we have difficult conversations. My continued goal is that we had a vote, and we move on together. Together, we support each other on that vote, and we support our community. There are a lot of kids in Pennsylvania that didn't get a chance to go to school today. That did not happen here. There are a lot of unions, teacher unions, that had sick outs. That did not happen here. There's a reason for that. We have the best teachers, the best administrators in the state, and that's why we'll remain open, and that's why this board will continue to do the work with the administration to make that the case. Closing schools is no good for anybody. Our teachers want to teach. Our students want to be in class, and they want to learn. There are other issues that the board will deal with in the year ahead, and I hope we can start to come together. With that... Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. I am going to postpone...
I am Mr. Saylor.
Oh, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Saylor, I am going to postpone my report, if I may, until next week, and it will actually be presented in the form of special recognition. Thank you.
Mr. Subers.
I have no report.
Okay. We're talking about board and district committee reports in section 9.04, but is there anyone that has anything that they want to talk about or offer from a committee or a board report? Kim or Laura? No? Okay. Mr. Keenan is not here. Yeah, it's fine. Or actually, hold on one second. You have one. Sarah, do you want to... Can you do education? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I apologize. Having a day with this computer. Looking to consent agenda to add the following items to be added to consent for approval for the January 10th business meeting. 7.02, approval of leave of absences. 7.04, 8.01, 8.02, and 8.03 will be added to consent. And Sarah Evans-Brockett, are you able to do education?
Yep.
Thank you.
Item 4.01 is the education update. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Let me get reorganized here. So, this evening, we're going to talk about three different topics. LIFT programming, which is our summer programming, our enrollment and staffing projections for next year, as well as our calendar recommendation for next year. So first, we'll start with LIFT, which is Learning is Fun Together. And I want to talk a little bit about summer programming, which is our K-12, both enrichment and remediation offerings, as well as our high school credit recovery. And it's about this time every year that we begin to talk about that, as well as extended school year, which Dr. Boyd and I will present on in February. We also have some before and after-school programming that, as a response to the pandemic and through the use of some of our ESER funds, that we would like to cultivate and improve upon what we're able to offer to our students to give them more opportunities to be together, to socialize, and again, to be with their peers, whether that be academic, social, emotional, or interest-based. And we have several ideas that you can see there on the screen, from book clubs to mentoring with a partnership with our sinus, to mountain biking ideas, and different ideas that our principals and staff and students have shared. We would like to include the before and after-school programming under the auspices of the LIFT program and kind of package all of that together as opportunities that are available for our students. The next slide, I believe, has some information in terms of our costs. We do have the large portion of the budget is for salaries and benefits or contracts with third-party vendors who may be providing some of the programming for us. In 2021, we did have an MOU, or memorandum of understanding, with our union to offer $35 an hour to our staff who provided services during LIFT programming in the summer. And this year, we are working with the union and Mr. Subers to develop another MOU for this summer, and we would like to recommend $40 per hour for our staff. We know that all of the districts around us will be increasing their rates as well, and we'd like to be competitive. And so, we hope to bring something forward in February for that as well. And then, transportation is another large part of these costs as we provide the late bus, as well as transportation was provided for all summer programming. And then, there is some additional cost for materials and resources. This slide then shows you what is available in terms of those ESER funds. In 2021, our summer program, I believe on the screen says around $327,000, was what we actually expended. We had budgeted about $340 in ESER 2. And as you can see through ESER 3, we have been required to allocate 20% of what we receive, which is around $360,000. And the new ARPESER Act 24 set-asides put some additional funds there that we are required. So, we do have close to $400,000 to be able to utilize towards this type of programming for our students, which is exciting for us to be able to move forward with. So, you'll see more of that coming in February with actual approvals to run the program, and then any staffing that would go with that would be approved by the board as well. The next topic is enrollment and staffing projections. I know these slides get a little bit hard to see. I'll just call out a couple of things. We have typically, every year, we look at our current enrollment, and we roll the students over to the next year. What is on the screen now is our elementary programming, and I'll just point out, for those of you that have maybe not been through our staffing projections before, we always add 11% to our enrollment increases from kindergarten to first. That has historically been an increase that we've seen. Some families participate in, you know, outside programming for kindergarten but return to the district in first grade. So, you'll notice that. You'll also notice anything highlighted in yellow is simply recognizes that it's a change from the number of staff that are currently in those particular grades. And then, you can see across the bottom, anything circled is a change in that particular building. We also have everything calculating to meet within our class size guidelines that are within our school board policy. The next slide is our middle school, and similarly, you will see yellows and reds here as well. The middle school gets a little bit trickier because certifications now are subject-specific. So, in 7th and 8th grade, you have to have a certification in the actual area in which you are teaching, unlike a K-6 elementary certification. So, while it may look like we could reduce staffing in some areas, certifications makes us have to have somebody with a particular certification. You'll also notice that, I believe it's our 8th grade next year is large. Our 7th grade is large this year, and as they move up, as we have tried to keep our class sizes down, we do share some staff between East and West, and we would anticipate continuing to do that. So, in the bottom right of the screen, you will see the breakout. While they are not necessarily reducing homeroom numbers, they are reducing the enrollment in our classes in ELA, science, and math. We're able to do that. And then, the next slide is the high school, which is a beast of its own. As Dr. Moss can attest to, it's not as simple as taking the numbers and dividing them up by homerooms because everything is driven based upon the course requests of students. At this time, we are not anticipating an increase in staff for any of our courses that are taught at the high school, but they are just embarking upon the scheduling process. So then, the summary slide is the next one, which really shows you what it is that we are requesting in terms of staffing for next year, and these are still very preliminary. Mr. Weaver has incorporated five additional positions into the budget, and you see them listed there. January 24th, we have our annual data presentation where we will provide data that supports each of these requests that we have listed here in these five. We also continue to monitor many areas, as you can see listed at the bottom, including special education, English language development, and our high school counseling to ensure that we are supporting all of our students. Then, the final one here in staffing is our projections versus our requests. As you can see on the far right, if we are requesting those five positions, but based upon our declining enrollment, we may have three positions within our current staff that we could reallocate, which then actually is an add to the budget of two. We continue to keep the five. Mr. Weaver will talk with you about that as he does budget. And then, as we get closer into the spring, we will adjust as these, you know, play themselves out, and we continue to monitor the situation. And then, the last topic is the calendar. And I just want to pull it up here. It is hard for me to see over there, so... A couple of points I have brought to you, attached in the agenda, is a recommended calendar for 2223. We are not requesting action this month. However, should the board be ready, we can certainly add it to next week's agenda, or we can bring it back in February. We are recommending a start date prior to Labor Day that has been our past practice for the last couple of years, of August 29th, which leaves a tentative last day of June 13th. However, that does have three inclement weather days included, which historically, we have utilized between 1 to 5 inclement weather days in looking at the last five years. It also includes December 23rd as a holiday. That was actually new this current year in the calendar. Previous to that, this 24th was the first day off for the winter break. It has four half-days for in-service, which is historical as well. I would like to have some consideration or discussion. I'm interested in hearing what the board thinks in terms of the utilization of flexible instruction days. If you recall, back in the summer, we applied to Pennsylvania Department of Education, our FID plan, which allows us to implement a virtual instruction day, whether synchronous or asynchronous for multiple reasons, certainly could be pandemic-related, or could be based upon the weather. So, we have had conversations as an administrative team regarding, do we have an inclement weather day where school is closed, a snow day that we all know that our students and even our staff enjoy? Or do we implement a virtual instruction day if we have our internet access and our power and we're able to do that, and therefore, not need to extend our school year? But the recommended calendar that is here tonight for discussion, again, has the three days included. Should we not include those? We could have a last day of school of June 8th. The other piece is I will be embarking upon conversations with our high school administration about the inclusion of asynchronous days at the high school. For the past two years, we did have an asynchronous day on PSAT test day. Logistically, it worked out very nicely for our students who were not taking tests to be able to partake in their activities asynchronously from home. That allowed us to implement the test very logistically well. And as well as spring keystone testing. Last year, we did keystones instead of taking six instructional days where our schedule is adjusted and students may be rearranged in classes in a typical school year. Last year, we used three asynchronous days and completed all of the testing in three days, which again, was a huge help and less disruption to instruction. So, we are considering actually putting those on the calendar and noting them from the start so that parents and students are aware of that. Again, I will have further conversations with our high school staff to ensure that's the direction we'd like to go before we would bring back that final piece to you. But we thought the more notice we could give to parents if we move in that direction, the better. So, the last slide really just has a picture of the schedule on it for you. And again, I'm really interested in any conversation that you may have or thoughts as we, you know, make some final tweaks to this before we bring a final recommended calendar. Any questions?
So, I just want to make sure. This year, we had decided that we would have three inclement weather days, and then, anything beyond that, we would consider virtual instructions. Is that what you're considering again for the next calendar? Or is that still open for discussion?
I think that's what we would like to have some discussion around this evening. That is what we did last year and what our tentative understanding has been this year. We all know that everybody, though, the closer we get to June, nobody wants to extend the year. So, there is the possibility where we could have less built into the schedule and rely upon those virtual days, unless, of course, the weather demands that we can't connect, you know, with our students virtually.
And then, as far as the keystones and possible asynchronous days for high school, there's some middle school students that take keystones as well. So, how would that work?
Yeah, last year, when we did that, the middle school still chose to administer the keystone exam on a regularly scheduled school day. It is a smaller population of students, and it only affects one grade level in the middle schools. Typically, there might be some outliers who are 7th graders who may be taking it, but there may be, most of them are 8th graders. So, they're able to logistically manage that. Those students might miss classes while they are taking the test, but for the number that are being tested, we didn't feel that an asynchronous day for the whole school would really be appropriate. Where at the high school, we are testing students, you know, they could be 9th grade all the way up through 12th grade if they are, you know, retesting and so forth. So, it is a large number of students.
Any questions? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
This is separate from the calendar, looking at the enrollment numbers. If we could just get some feedback in the future on how this has worked for the current 7th grade class at East. I'm happy that we're able to lower our numbers in math, ELA, and science, but having 28 kids in social studies classes, I'm curious what the feedback is from staff and teachers on how well that's going. So, in terms of as we look for staffing for next year, if that continues to serve our students well.
Absolutely, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. I can certainly solicit some of that from our principals and teachers. I can share with you that, you know, the social studies teachers certainly will, you know, indicate it is a much larger number for them. And the reason this is the way it is is because of the certification. So, we don't have an additional social studies certified teacher that we could share between the two buildings, where we do in the other three subjects. But I will get that feedback.
Want to check with Ms. Mares or Ms. White?
Not seeing anything.
Anybody else? All good.
Thank you.
Do you like to return to Mr. Keenan for this section, since he's back?
Sure, thank you.
All right. Well, we're at the memo of understanding, I think. Oh, two. I thought we were just doing... I heard enrollment. But we'll go over the enrollment report, which will... Next week, which will be presented January 10th. Now, 4.03, approval of memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County Community College. We have a motion to approve the Gateway to College Partnership Memorandum of Understanding with Montgomery County Community College to enable Perkyman Valley School District students to participate in the specialized dropout recovery and dropout prevention program. So, let's see.
Your motion?
That's the motion. I'm making the motion. No?
There's no motion this evening. It's just up for discussion.
Oh, that'll be next week.
Typically, if there's no debate, it could be added to the consent agenda.
Are there any questions about this? Wanted added to consent, that's fine.
So, 4.04, approval of proposed Act 24 ARPESER allocations. We will have a motion to ratify the proposed allocations for the 24 ARPESER elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds as presented. Any questions?
I do. Is it 29,000? Is that for multiple classrooms? That's... Is that two?
So, actually, this is not going to be a request for action next week. If you'll note, in the administrative content, we were... The intention was to return this back to the committees to have further conversation based upon the feedback from the board. But to answer your question, Mr. Saylor, that 29,000 that we have allocated in the initial recommendations for social, emotional, mental health support for the middle school outdoor classrooms would cover, at least to our knowledge now, the expenses that we are aware of. We're still uncovering some of those, but it would cover both, one at East and one at West.
Mrs. Smith, I just want to verify. So, the motion as written is inaccurate, if I heard you correctly? This is a discussion, not a ratification next week?
I believe we had talked about the fact that the board tabled it until this month, and then, it was going to fall off the agenda and go back to committee before we brought back recommendations.
Okay, so we will revise this statement? Okay, so we will revise this statement in the agenda? It's not a ratification for next week, so we'll make that correction.
Dropping it. Yep.
Do you want a motion to amend the agenda? 4.05. 4.05, a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Athletic Health and Safety Plan. It's version eight as presented.
Now, Dr. Russell, you were talking about combining.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Saylor. So I mean, after last night's action, there's redundancy in both plans. So the board can consider allowing this motion to fall off the table, quote-unquote, not act on it. And I will make sure that if there are any questions around athletics, which again, I believe are addressed in the plan that was approved last night, I can certainly fill in gaps. But I don't know that it's necessary any longer to have those two plans moving forward.
Any other questions?
So can we make a motion to drop the Athletic Health and Safety Plan and combine it into the original plan? Or is that not necessary?
I think if there's no action taken, then this will also be removed from the agenda for next week.
Do you want to explain what we found out through the policy about how something drops off?
Yeah, I can do that, or Mr. Suberskin. I'm sorry, Dr. Kolar. I wasn't, I didn't quite hear you. Could you repeat what your comment or question was?
So I feel like this is a little different because we're not just dropping an action item. We're talking about combining the Athletic Health and Safety Plan, like working it into the other Health and Safety Plan. So I was wondering if we needed a motion to do that.
Okay, that's a good question. In my view, at this point, I believe that the mitigation measures in place and being applied in the athletic setting, as well as for spectators, has been covered in the current plan. So I don't know that this plan is necessary anymore because it's become wholesale for our entire district in a lot of other ways.
Right. That's what I'm asking is currently we have version seven, I guess, in place. Do we need to move to kind of nullify the Athletic Health and Safety Plan because it's encompassed in the other plan?
Yeah, I would agree with that suggestion, yes.
Yes, I would agree that that would be an appropriate addition to next week's agenda.
So we can consider a motion to void, or well, to remove the Athletic Health and Safety Plan, version seven.
I would suggest using the word nullify.
Nullify, well. It probably already has been, but sure. We can absolutely make a motion to make it clear that the version seven has been nullified.
Are you making that motion?
Well, next week, right?
Correct, yeah. And do we want to go over? Do we want to, Dr. Kolar, does that satisfy what you were looking for?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't approve, we didn't continue with something that had already been approved if we're kind of putting it into this other plan.
Got it.
And actually, I really appreciate you bringing that up, Dr. Kolar. We will eliminate then, after the action next week, that version seven to avoid any confusion on the part of individuals who would go to our website. So I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
And do you just want to clarify for everybody how something drops off? We talked about that prior.
If I could, I would defer to our solicitor because I learned it from him.
So if a matter is tabled, it can be removed from the table the same evening. If it's not removed by the next regularly scheduled board meeting, it dies and is no longer before the governing body. So if by not taking this or removing this from the table, it would come off next week's agenda.
Anyone have any questions about that? All right, Dr. Kolar.
Section five, business. Item 5.01 is the finance update.
Oh, Dr. Kolar, hold on one second. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and it's really hard. I'm sorry, I can't really hear you, Dr. Kolar. But are we, did we put the agenda item in education to have a discussion about?
Oh, she's right, yeah.
I thought we did. For the, we amended the agenda.
All right, 4.05. We would have a motion to discuss?
Yeah, a motion to add to a discussion next week.
A motion to add to the discussion next week, exemption policy for kids.
Transition plan, version three.
To be included in transition plan number three.
Is there any discussion on that? Dr. Camp, please.
So are we discussing this exemption idea and making changes to it tonight? And then next week is when any voting would happen? So tonight, we can ask the questions and get the clarification?
You can discuss it tonight. It'll be voted on next week, yeah.
Okay, I was just clarifying. So I guess my question is, because I do agree that there are students who have legitimate reasons that they need an exemption. But I heard Dr. Russell say that for students who were unable to obtain a doctor's note, that the district does have some flexibility to take that on as a case-by-case basis, such as the situation that we were emailed about earlier today. So I'm a little confused as to what changes we would make to the exemption process, what the proposal would be if we already have a layer in where people can go to the next step if they can't obtain that doctor's note. I don't know if I made myself clear with that question. But that's kind of where I'm kind of wondering, what is the point, or what are we trying to get out of this?
That's a good question. Do you want to?
I wondered, before I respond to that, I do appreciate your comments and your points. Mrs. Mares, did you want to clarify your thinking?
Excuse me. I really just wanted to get this on so we could discuss it. And I am open to if you would prefer to think about it and discuss it next week. That works for me. If we, as a board, decide that we don't want to make an amendment or change the mask exemption form, it would be wonderful to have at least some avenue of communication for those families who have students that are really struggling, what might be the process that they would go through. So, and I know I didn't give you much heads up. We talked about this, but not in great detail. Or I had asked you to consider this. So if you want to discuss it next week, that's also fine. I'm really, that's really what I'm just looking for, is a process to give those families that really need that exemption a way to know about it and know what they can do.
So I have a question. So a parent, the parent that emailed today, let's say for the example, goes to their doctor and explains to the doctor the issues that they're having, but the doctor doesn't sign the document, right? But technically, with our health and safety plan, there is no exemption because you have to have a doctor sign the document. But you're saying there is a secondary layer where somebody will decide if the issue that's happening is adequate? Would that be an accurate statement?
So I would say yes, that's the flavor of what we've been discussing. What I would articulate it a little bit differently. And just to add to that, what happens is there is a team or several individuals that come together. In the case of the individual we learned about today, there would be some key individuals in the school setting that would come together and evaluate the system, learn about it, and make considerations for accommodations that could go into a 504 plan. So there is a path to supporting this family. There aren't, I'm sorry.
But is that in the Health and Safety Plan?
Yes. Well, no, I'm sorry. It's in the exemption form. I'm sorry. So that 504 path, or the IDEA, IEP path, are paths that our families take when their children do qualify without that doctor's note for an exemption. Now, they're not very common. In this particular case, I feel like we can absolutely support this family. It will not be difficult to do. And already, as I mentioned, Mrs. Lewis is working with that. Now, if there are other families that are tolerating situations like that, we need to reach out to them or encourage them to reach out to us because our kids have been great. They wear their masks every day. However, if individuals are struggling with what this family presented today, we certainly want to support that more effectively.
I wonder, or go ahead, Dr. Camp.
No, I was just going to say, like, I think, like, I really appreciate that. And I think maybe the overarching goal then is to maybe have some easy access as far as, okay, if you're at this step and it doesn't work, go to the next step. And I know it's in the exemption form and the explanation, but maybe there's even like a way to put it on the website that's a little bit more user-friendly, a little bit more accessible for families to understand versus having to go through the whole document to try and kind of figure it out. It might be a little bit more accessible.
What Dr. Camp is saying, I've heard from a lot of parents about issues that they have, that their children have with the mask, that they can't get an exemption because their doctor won't sign it. And in a lot of times, you know, when I was in my IT days, I would always say that's user error, right? You're doing something bad to your computer. It's user error. I don't know if people know that there are ways to get an exemption. I think sometimes they might feel, well, you know, my doctor said no, but you know, my kid comes home and he's got red marks all over his face, and they don't necessarily know. So similar to, I think, Dr. Camp, I think you and I are probably saying the same thing, just differently. But sometimes it's user error, and we just have to fix that user error.
I mean, I certainly appreciate, I do think some additional communication would be helpful. Again, our form is quite formal. However, it does afford individuals who qualify for accommodations under the Americans for Disabilities Act with a 504 plan to actually obtain one and then be accommodated. So we'll work on, we could, right now, as opposed to maybe changing the form at this point, we can work on communicating that more effectively to our families. And again, I can talk to principals and nurses about reaching out to those that they may be aware of and extending ourselves a little bit more. Because in the case that was presented today, it seems as if it's been going on for some time. And it would be important to me that we are aware of that or make ourselves aware of that sooner and support sooner.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think that's kind of the end goal, is to make sure that families who legitimately have a need, that we're able to hear them and to work with them.
Ms. White has a comment also.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. So I guess my question is with regards to the fact that what it seems like Mrs. Mares is requesting is an override of, or a workaround, I guess, I should say, to the exemption process. And I'm concerned that the intention may be pure in allowing families that have, again, like Dr. Camply said, legitimate reasoning to ask for an exemption, that this will, in essence, serve as a workaround. And what I am concerned about is the influx and the workload that will be put on the responsible parties for qualifying these additional requests. I'm assuming that that happens at the building level. And then at some function, maybe the Special Education Department? I don't know where these exemptions to the exemption, or exceptions to the exemption are being fielded right now. But I think that we can probably all agree and appreciate that everybody is pretty taxed right now. So I'm just concerned about the end game of opening this dialogue because I think that you were pretty clear, Dr. Russell, about the fact that there is a process in place for families that have legitimate need for an exemption of some sort, but not a doctor's note.
One of the TVs went out. I'm sorry, I was distracted by that. So I don't know if I hit a cord underneath or if there's another challenge to our technical setup. So to Ms. White's points, I would not characterize individuals who would qualify for a 504 or an exemption through their IEP as a workaround. I mean, there are legitimate, 504s in place right now, that support with accommodations, individuals who have some pretty challenging situations. And similar to what was described to us today, I would describe those as pretty challenging for a third grader that we legitimately would be obligated and would want to support. So I understand and appreciate what you're pointing out and how the floodgates could open. I'm worried about that too, which is why I don't want to rush to recommending and approving changes to the exemption form. However, in the short term, I do think we can do a better job of connecting with these families who may be struggling in the ways that the family presented to us today and support more effectively.
So I appreciate that. And just to be clear, just to clarify, because I don't know if I was clear about that. I'm not suggesting that 504s and IEP exemptions are workarounds by any means. I think what this particular, this conversation being initiated is looking to do is to provide a workaround for families that do not have a legitimate 504 IEP to get an exemption that is not doctor or IEP or 504 approved. And I'm not saying that there are not extenuating circumstances in some instances, like the issue that we keep referring to. I think there is a common sense factor at play. But I also think that there is a balance of privilege versus actual, you know, issue. I don't know how different to say that.
I just, I think I understand where you're coming from, Ms. White. Like, are we putting us, like, by having some of these open conversations, is it going to be a floodgate for, maybe say there's 20 families who, you know, all come to the school and say, I need a 504, I need an IEP due to needing a mask exemption. I can't get a doctor's note. But out of that 20, maybe only two of them are legitimate. And the other 18 are people just trying to find a workaround. And the worry from what I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. White, is the worry of what type of strain will that put on the individuals who have to work through collecting the data and the information to make that determination? Because a 504 and an IEP is not necessarily always a quick and easy process. Am I understanding you correctly, Ms. White?
That's exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying.
So I, you know, again, I would respond with, administration wants to support families who are in a position like the one that presented to us today. We have very few of those right now. And to qualify for a 504 or an IEP, there are strict criteria that must be met before the district would afford that plan in either case. And we do have a protocol that we would follow. So what I would like to do, again, in the short term, is consider how we might first support the family that's reached out to all of us on the board and support more effectively. I'd also like to talk to Mrs. Lewis about what sense she may have regarding others who may be struggling in a similar way. Again, I don't want to necessarily, quote-unquote, open the floodgates yet. Again, methodical, thoughtful steps towards transitioning as we continue to mitigate spread. However, I also don't want a student who's in a position, if described today, is the accurate position. I don't want that to continue either. So I know that our teams have been doing a really good job. I think we are obligated now to be very careful and stick to the protocol so that the criteria are met in situations that might be presented to us that don't have a doctor's note but could qualify for one of those other paths that's explained on the exemption form.
I just have a question from the standpoint of, from beginning to end, the kind of timeframe that might be looked at. If someone comes in and has a doctor's note, then that exemption, I'm assuming, could go into effect virtually right away. If they do not have a doctor's note and they have to start the process of either going through an I E P testing or a 504, what kind of timeframe would they be looking at theoretically then?
Well, an I E P is much longer, the timeframe for that. And that, you know, there are timeframes to get a permission to evaluate, out and signed, returned, and then to actually conduct the multidisciplinary team evaluation, 60 days. So that takes a long time potentially. A 504 can be much quicker, depending upon the efficiency with which a meeting is scheduled and then the information that's presented to justify whatever may be provided in terms of accommodations in a 504 plan.
And I can kind of speak to that just a little bit due to what I do. When a student is going through the process of getting an I E P and we're looking at having that calendar of 60 days, there is nothing that precludes the district from putting a 504 in place if there is enough evidence to show that the child has a disability and we're just working to see whether or not they need specially-designed instruction. So if there is enough evidence that says a student, like in the case we had today, is very much a medical base, that would be enough to do a 504. If we thought there needed to be more beyond that and that the child needed specially-designed instruction through the gate of special education, the 504 can be put in place in the interim of waiting for the I E P process and the evaluation process to occur. So that can kind of help speed it up if we're in kind of like this conundrum with a case such as the one today.
Yeah, the question was, I'm familiar with both, having worked with them for a long time, but I wanted to make sure that the board was also aware that there's a difference as far as the timeframe. If someone has a doctor's note, it's this. If they're going the other route, it could be this.
And the timeframe gets them past where we're, past January 21st. Correct. But have there been 504s that have been denied? How many 504s have we received, just off top of the head? Five, 100?
I don't know that, honestly. I mean, that's data that I could certainly gather, but for the most part, we don't hear much about this from our families because they're plodding along or they've qualified either through a doctor's note for an exemption or they've been provided a 504 plan or they qualify through their I E P. So, you know, this situation is standing out to me based on how it was presented to us. That's concerning. We will address this pretty quickly and there are ways that we can do that. And I'm very confident that we can do that. Again, in speaking with Mrs. Lewis, we discussed some options and we'll reach out to the family and have more of a conversation. And we can do that this week, so it can be a pretty quick turnaround.
We might have a discussion next week and say the plan's fine as it is. Right? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Evans Rocket?
I wasn't sure if you had a question or a comment.
I was just going to clarify earlier that I think our plan as stated is fine. It's just we need to make sure our families are aware that there are accommodations available. Our nurses are great people. If you have an issue, reach out to your nurse. And that's exactly what I told this mom today, is that's not a situation that your child should be dealing with. Reach out to Mrs. Lewis, she'll take care of it. That's the bottom line, is if there is an issue, reach out to the school nurse.
And I appreciate you emphasizing that. So what I want to work on is how I might communicate more effectively in this week's message to help people to know that as we continue on this path. So thank you.
And now, Dr. Kolar.
Section 5, Take 2. Item 5.01 is the finance update. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Dr. Kolar. Good evening, School Board. We have our pleasure tonight to present a finance update and it's our, in the business office, it's our report card out. With us tonight, we have Mr. Carl Hogan, who will join us at the podium to review our general purpose financial statements for our financial activities for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Mr. Hogan, I know that we've spent 365 days a year with transactions and you've spent months auditing our statements. We have about 10 minutes to go over this tonight. If you need it, that's great. If not, that's fine as well.
I know that's why everybody came here tonight for the audit presentation, so.
Dr. Russell, if you would advance.
I'm sorry, hold on one second, please, sir.
I'm sorry, Carl. Mrs. Mares did want to make a comment and I didn't see it quick enough before we moved to section 5. So if it's all right, is it all right for her to go back and make a comment in section 4?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mrs. Mares.
It's okay. I was just going to say, I look forward to hearing from what Mrs. Lewis has to say, just, you know, canvassing the other nurses or what their experiences are and hearing that next week. That's all. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Kolar, the third time's a charm.
Okay. Section 5.01, Finance Update. Continue, please.
Thank you, Dr. Kolar. Mr. Hogan?
So in everybody's board packet tonight, we have the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2021. I think it's about almost 70 pages of reading for everybody. I kind of pared it down to about six or seven slides, or those six or seven slides I think are most important to the board here tonight as board members. Just stop me at any point if you have any kind of questions, but all, you know, it's kind of a historical perspective. It kind of segues into the budget process that everybody's about to go through currently. So this kind of gives you a starting point as of June 30th, 2021. You're halfway through the year this year and you're going to start the budget process for 2022, 2023. The first two pages that we have up on the screen here is the most important two pages of the audit report. This is the independent auditor's report, basically what you're hiring us for, to basically give an opinion on your financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2021. As you can see, there's a lot of paragraphs, a lot of information here. It outlines what our responsibilities are, what management's responsibilities are, what responsibility we're taking for the different sections of the financial statements. The one thing I want to point out in relation to the audit report, there's a mention of management's discussion and analysis. This is a part of the audit report that reflects the numbers that are in the audit report. We don't audit all the information in management's discussion and analysis, but because the audit report's a historical document, it gives management the ability to put in layperson's terms the financial activity for the year ended June 30th, 2021. In addition, not only the activity that happened during the year, but it also gives them the ability to go ahead and talk about, you know, future factors in between when the year ended and any kind of things that have happened since then. So it kind of gives that opportunity since it's kind of looking backwards as of June, back to June 30th. But the most important paragraph within this independent auditor's report is probably the shortest one, and it's the bottom one down there at the bottom, the opinion paragraph, basically stating that the numbers presented to us by management for the year ended June 30th, 2021 were fairly presented. Go to the next slide.
Some more small numbers.
So the first slide I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with over here on page number 60. And like Jim said, just like this is the business office's report card, I look at the statement on page number 50, the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund, kind of like the report card for the school board. You kind of put a budget out there at the beginning of the year and you kind of see how the numbers come in. Kind of a little unfair for 2020, 2021, when the board went through the budget process for this year, I think there was an anticipation that people would be going back to school in September and things would be kind of normal, things would have kind of calmed down. So this budget was kind of put in perspective or when it was adopted with the assumption that kids would be back into school in September. As we all know, there was kind of like a hybrid, virtual, in-person learning throughout the whole year. So it's kind of funny, you know, there's a lot of variances, ups and downs, but it's kind of uncanny. It kind of works out in the end. I'll kind of go over some of those variances now. Total revenues budgeted for the year end, up at the top, $110 million. They came in at $113 million. And you'll see some variances on the right-hand side there. So when you went through the budget process for 2020, 2021, everybody, there was a real scare that local source revenues wouldn't come in as anticipated, especially as it pertains to those that are income-based taxes related to your earned income taxes. So when you put your budget together, you're really conservative in terms of those earned income taxes, your collections for real estate taxes. But in reality, things came in, you know, better than anticipated and kind of on par with previous years. So what you're seeing here is a reflection of those numbers coming in over budget because you were conservative, because you just didn't know how things were going to be. And they actually came in $3.8 million over budget, which most of that is related to, number one, your earned income taxes, number two, your realty transfer taxes, as we all know, a lot of the districts had a lot of sales in their houses, et cetera. So also, which was kind of offset a little bit by some investment income, but overall positive variance there. State sources came in $1.5 million less than budget. Normally, you know, these monies that are kind of coming in from the state, but there are also revenues related to reimbursement matters, related to the retirement and the social security reimbursement. Some of your, you know, there were vacancies during the year, there was, you know, teachers that weren't in, weren't filled during the year. So those reimbursement rates or amounts that would be reimbursed for retirement and social security came in just a little bit under budget than was originally anticipated. And then you have your federal sources, $1.1 million over budget, and this is all related to the COVID-19 funding that wasn't originally budgeted. So overall, expenditures came in $3.4 million over budget, primarily being driven by those local sources we just talked about. Expenditures, as you see down at the bottom, budgeted $102.5 million, almost came in exactly at $102.3 million. Like I said, it was kind of uncanny how the expenditures came in, because if you look on the right-hand side there, student transportation services is going to stick right out to you there in terms of, because of the fact that you had virtual learning for part of the year, also because of the hybrid, there wasn't as many bus runs and you had some savings there. But also, you had some overruns in other categories, you know, some of it related to charter school tuition and cyber school tuition that wasn't originally anticipated. And then also, the operation and maintenance plant services, you can see that is over budget and that's because of, you received that grant money and a lot of the purchases that you made for the health and safety plan were coded within the operation and maintenance of plant services. And then as you come down below, you're going to see an item called Transfers Out. The school district has a debt service fund. Money is transferred from the debt, from the general fund over to the debt service fund to service the debt service as it becomes due. And as, you know what your debt service does on an annual basis, hence it's coming in on a budget. So at the beginning of the year, when you put the budget together, you budgeted to use about $2.3 million of fund balance. You actually added $1 million of fund balance. And then you're going to see the difference between those two is that $3.4 million, once again, all being driven by the revenue up at the top there. Beginning fund balance at the beginning of the year, 18.7, end of the year, 19.8. Any questions? All right. The next page I'm going to go over, I think there's one, go one more back. I just want to touch, over there on the left-hand side of the presentation there, it's the same information I just showed you on the other screen, but I just wanted to mention there's the capital projects fund for the school district during the current year. You had a $6 million capital project issue related to some capital projects. The biggest capital projects that we audited during the current year were related to the completion of the ESCO 3 project and then also the beginning of the ESCO 4 project and then also the stadium and turf renovations going on over there at the athletic fields. And then also, there's a debt service fund, as you can see. There's the money coming in down there at the bottom, the $10 million, about $9 million of debt service. So what the district has been really successful at doing over the past, as long as I've been working with the Perkham Valley School District, is taking advantage of those bond refunding opportunities. And when those bond refunding opportunities present themselves, the district's been able to put money away. So you're budgeting money and sending it over to the debt service fund, but you're not spending as much. So you're able to accumulate a fund balance within the debt service fund. And as you go through the budget process on an annual basis, you'll be able to use those savings from the bond refundings and then kind of smooth that into your budget to help close the gap when you go through the budget process each year. So you may, I think, we'll kind of go over that and see what you used. I think you used about $500,000 going into this year's budget related to the debt service fund. So as you go through the budget process, you have a difference between your revenues and expenditures and then you could use debt service fund, fund balance, to be able to smooth in any kind of differences you have there. I go to the next page. So like I just spoke about before, we have your revenues, expenditures, and the results of the operations for the year. And this is your balance sheet as of the end of the year. This is showing where your assets are, your liabilities are, and the excess of those assets over your liabilities being your fund balance. As you can see, general fund assets at $39 million, liabilities at $16 million, and the excess of the assets over the liabilities being the $19.8 million. Up at the top, you can see that the cash makes up a majority of all the assets within the general fund. And then they have, your biggest liability is your accrued salaries, payroll withholdings and benefits. So what happens is, teachers teach through June 30th, they're paid through August 31st, we accrue those salaries and benefits that they earned through June 30th and get paid out through the next 60 days. So this is the function of accruing those expenses in the year. The teacher, the teachers and staff provided the services and then they get paid out as the summer goes along. So in accordance with the Pennsylvania state law, a school district is allowed to keep 8% of what we call unassigned fund balance, 8% of next year's expenditure budget as unassigned fund balance. So in order, if you have in excess of that 8%, the 8% being the $9.3 million that you're seeing there, a school district board needs to either commit or assign fund balance for non, one-time, non-recurring expenditures. In the case of the district, they have taken action, or the school board, to commit fund balance for employer retirement rate stabilization. As we all know, the retirement rate has increased exponentially. Just a little bit of a history, back in 2008, 2009, the retirement rate was 4.78% for the employer rate. Today, it's about 35, 36%. It's about a 600% increase. So what school districts have been doing, because the rate has been increasing so much, is to put money aside and build that into their budget every year, just like the debt service fund, to kind of smooth in those increases and put money aside so you don't have to absorb it all in one year. The next commitment is for capital projects. There's always capital projects to do. It's always a good idea to put money aside. You have two ways that you can put money aside for capital projects. You can put money aside within your general fund within a commitment, or you could create a capital reserve fund. The problem with the capital reserve fund is once the money gets sent to a capital reserve, it can't come back. So the school board in the past has taken the issue or taken the stance to keep the money within the general fund. And then if they needed to uncommit it for a different reason, they could do so, because once you put it to the capital reserve in accordance with the municipal law, you can't bring it back. The next line item we have here is COVID-19 contingency. This money was put aside at the end of 2020 with the surplus that the district had. And in the current year, in addition to the grant funding that came in, the district used about $500,000 of that COVID-19 contingency for costs that were incurred during the year. And then finally, you have your amounts that you use to balance your 2021 budget. $2 million was used to balance the excess of the expenditures over the revenues when you put together your 21, 22 budget. And $1.5 million came from your unassigned and $500,000 is coming from your COVID-19 contingency. Any questions, concerns? No? All right. One other slide I put over here, I think is important for the school board, is just kind of your debt service over there. And you can kind of see, you work with your financial consultant on an annual basis to kind of smooth that in every year. consultant on an annual basis to kind of smooth that in every year, $10.5 million. And I know the board is continuously, and I don't think it's even on the agenda here tonight, to continue to look for bond refunding opportunities to be able to continue to, you know, look for savings in upcoming years here. And you work with your PFM doing that. Next slide. And then finally, I talked about what kind of audit opinion you had. I talked about what your fund balance is for each of the major funds. And finally, I wanted to talk about, there was no kinds of internal control deficiencies, material weaknesses that needed to be reported to the board. As part of our audit too, we also do what we call a single audit, and we audit the federal awards of the district. In the case of the district this year, their major federal award was the child nutrition cluster. This is because of the fact that all the lunches were free last year through the summer seamless option program, and it became a major program exceeding the threshold of $750,000. I anticipate in the upcoming year, the school district will have, the ESR awards will be the major program, with the ESR II and ESR III being the two largest, and those funds being extended spend it in the current year. The last thing I'd like to mention is that the business office also has some major filing deadlines, the first one being their annual financial report with PDE, and that was filed with the intimely fashion. They have an Emma reporting filing, but they're for their bonds. That'll get filed upon the acceptance of this report. And then finally, the single audit, the audit of the federal awards, which needs to be filed within nine months of year end, and we're well ahead of that as well, so. I don't know if I bored everybody too much now.
Any, any questions for Mr. Hogan? Again, please.
Just what page are the legal liabilities, the open legal liabilities accounted for? I just couldn't find it.
If there, if there were any kind of legal liabilities, they'd be accrued. I don't think there were any significant legal liabilities that were accrued, other than any type of deductibles that would have been due as of year end within here. But if it was, it would have been either captured within accounts payable or other liabilities there. On page number 618.
Okay, so there, and my question then is more, I mean, just straightforward, because I'm new. Are there any open cases?
So every year, as part of our audit process, we submit a letter to Mr. Subers, and Mr. Subers provides a detail of all the cases and what the likely outcome of those cases are going to be. And if there was a case that there was a likely potential negative outcome to the school district, we would accrue those liabilities as part of, you know, as of our financial statements. But anything that you're seeing here were either covered by normal insurance, but there was nothing that comes to my mind that is accrued in here that was more than a deductible.
Okay, no, for the financial statements, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you.
So one, one more way to look at Mr. Hogan's numbers. We have seen these before. Obviously, Mrs. Hurd and myself, we work closely with Mr. Hogan. We provide this information to the finance committee as Mr. Hogan goes forward with this. We do have several different versions of this. The important part of this is not what's on the left-hand side, but is what on the right hand, what is on the right-hand side, associated with the strategic use of fund balances. As Mr. Hogan mentioned, we do have fund balances available to us. We do utilize those funds moving forward strategically, together as a team, a finance team, for future budgeting purposes. So that was just important to note, and you, you see the numbers there in red, our Peasars reserve, because once, this is the June 30, 2021, July 1st is a magical day for accounting purposes. So all of those reserves that we utilize to offset the 21, 22 budget, we now remove from the reserves that are in this report, and then those reserves are listed in the red moving forward for this year. Of course, transactions, as Mr. Hogan did say, the school board with overages, we can make adjustments, we can add back into them as the year goes on. But those are the numbers that we'll work with moving forward as we come to a 2022, 2023 balance, balanced budget approach. Dr. Russell? So, so where are we for a quick budget update? Again, this is, was a quick condensed, since the last time we did the first comprehensive review, so I'll move real quick. We have an interactive that we did introduce to the newer school board members. Of course, the existing school board members, you did know how we, how we work this. This interactive shows the simple adjustments and the months that we're recommending these adjustments. So for instance, we have two adjustments for this month to show to the school board. One is, the biggest thing that happened between the last presentation and this presentation is that Peasars actually certified the rate. We had a rate in there based upon projections at 35.62. However, Peasars did set the rate at 35.26. So because of that, and the way that we budget, we actually have to reduce the revenues, because that is the 50% share. And then in the expenditure side, you can see a reduction associated with the Peasars rate certification from 35.62 to 35.26. Again, three simple adjustments to the budget presentation for 22, 23 as presented. We were at an 8.1% increase, almost 8.2% in the first version. We're now at a 7.73% increase for 22, 23. We've got a lot of work to do, there's a lot of information there. I'm going to continue to move forward with it, and you do, you do know, if you have any questions or concerns about the 22, 23 budget, let us know. Any questions where the 22, 23 budget stands at this point in time? Okay, thank you. Dr. Russell? Okay, the last component of the finance update is real quick. There is a motion on the board agenda tonight to move forward with a bond refunding. Mr. Hogan mentioned that. This typically, Ms. Jamie Doyle is here from Public Financial Management. Unfortunately, she cannot be here tonight. I just wanted to reiterate that the bond funding opportunity has been being tracked since September. We had an update in November and in December, I believe, for the finance committee. This refunding opportunity is a little bit unique and different to us. In the past, we went straight internet auction with our bond issues. In this particular approach, because of the tight market that we have that exists in this current day, Jamie has recommended, and we agree with her, to move with a dual approach. We're going to use a bank RFP process, and we're also going to use the internet auction process. We will look at those results, and then we'll combine, and then we'll pick and choose, we'll be able to pick and choose our process for our bonds, issuing of our refunding of our bonds. We are hopeful that with the current economic environment and the fact that federal chairman Powell has predicted that there could be two to three increases in the interest rates, those are the keys to us to move forward with this, to get this in line, to make sure that we're ahead of the game prior to the interest rate increases, because that will affect our ability to issue our bonds. We have excellent bond rating, we're stable at AA. That's been reaffirmed several times. And again, the key component to that is our funding reserves, our ability to finance, and our ability to have strong balance sheet items. That's what investors look for. That's why the bond rating agencies that we use, they reaffirm that AA rating. We're in good position to do that. And because of that, we're unique that we can use this dual approach. Dr. Russell, if you were to move forward? The combination of this is an, over an $18 million bond issue, refunding, I'm sorry. And we did set a floor, this motion sets a floor of 2%. Happy to say that the conservative estimates that Ms. Doyle has provided us is about 2.48% return on, on, on the $18 million refunding. So hopefully, the conservative nature of Jamie has come through. It's never failed us in the past. Economic conditions work with us, our balance sheet items are strong. This should be a successful bond refunding for us moving forward, provide savings for this year, perhaps next year, and into the next, next year, depending upon where the bond, the bond refunding falls. This is a step in the direction. Jamie would be here providing this. We have the motion, we approve the motion, hopefully the school board agrees, and then we'll move forward, we'll be back in February to continue along this process. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Item 4.5.02, Report on Grants and Donations. The robotics team received a grant or donation in the amount of $1,000 from College Villatalian Bakery for robotics parts and purchase parts needed for the robotics team. Item 5.03, The Recommended Action will be a motion to ratify special education contracts and costs of services for the 2021, 2022 school year to meet requirements of students' IEPs through out-of-district placements and special services provided to students within our district programs. Any discussion? Can we move that to consent, please? Item 5.04, The Recommended Action will be a motion to approve legal services with Whistler Perlstein LLP regarding student discipline. Any discussion? Mr. Dorf?
I was just curious, does insurance cover the cost of this attorney?
No.
Doesn't, it comes out of the district budget?
This is, this was an attorney that was retained to represent the administration in the event that the discipline matter moved forward.
Thank you.
Can we move this to consent? Everyone comfortable? Item 5.05, The Recommended Action will be a motion to approve the agreement with Lower Perk Little League for fencing on Field 6 to provide improvements to Field 7 and to begin construction of an additional field on the property of Skipback Elementary. Any discussion? Okay, can we move that to consent? Item 5.06 is a placeholder for next week. Item 5.07, The Recommended Action will be a motion to authorize the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as financial advisor, Fox Rothschild LLP as bond counsel and solicitor in conjunction with the issuance of the district's general obligation bond series of 2022, the proceeds of which will be used to currently refund all or a portion of the district's outstanding 2017 and 2017A bonds via competitive internet auction with a minimum net savings target of 2% or $363,500. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move that to consent as well, and that concludes Section 5.
Thank you very much. Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Section 6, Payment of Bills. Next week will be asked to ratify bills and payroll and authorize payments, and also approve the treasurer's report and financial statements. That concludes Section 6.
Section 7, 01, 03, and 05 are all space holders, 02 and 04 are both consent. That concludes Section 7.
Thank you. Section 8 is Support Personnel, 8.01, 2, 3 are placeholders, are on consent, rather, I'm sorry. And 8.04 is a placeholder for approval of community education appointments. 8.05 is the approval to create a new position. The recommended action is a motion to approve a new position of human resources, generalist personnel specialists, as part of the supervisor's confidential administrative assistance and registered nurses' compensation plan. Are there any questions? Hearing none, as long as it can be confirmed that there are indeed none, I would ask that that gets moved to consent, and that ends the section.
Dr. Campley, Mrs. Mares has sent me a text that she's having problems hearing. Would you want to take this last section?
Sure. So 9.01, Recommended Action is a motion to hold a second reading and adopt the following policies of 124, 125, 214, 234, 237, and 238. 9.02 is the, Recommended Action is a motion to approve Mr. Rowan Keenan to be Perkins Valley School District's representative to the MCIU Board of Directors to finish Mrs. Evans-Brockett's term through June 30, 2022. 9.03 is a discussion for a review of the 2021 board goals. Any questions for anything so far? Okay. And 9.04 is a discussion for the review of 2022 committee assignments and operations. Questions or comments?
Can I just ask if 9.01 and 9.02 are on consent then, since there were no questions?
Do we want to go back to 9.03? Dr. Campley, can I go back to 9.03 real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
So this is the, this is the 2021 board goals that then, Dr. Russell put the evidence information in there. I don't know if we want to discuss this. I know that I've asked Mrs. Mares to work on the 2022 board goals and to reach out to all the board members to get their input on creating a 22 version, which we can then talk about in February in the work session, and then pass in February in the business meeting, continuing with the trend of having these board goals. If there's anything anyone wants to talk about now, or not? Okay. Well, obviously, we have this as a guide as well as we create the 22 version.
Okay, that takes us to 9.04, discussion of the review of the 2022 committee assignments and operations. So this is open for questions, comments.
Evan Brockett?
I would just ask if you can review your plans for how you'd like committees to operate, and explain the reasoning for the change in how committees operate?
You know, sure. There are many districts in Pennsylvania that work with having the committees put a non-binding vote in their committee when something's moved over to the work session, have their committee put a non-binding vote on that, so the, so the, so the subject matter gets added to the work session, and it gives more content to it. And that was the thought process of doing that here, to be able to get, you know, some more review and thought process and discussion and debate on why something is moved over and what happens at that committee, at that committee meetings.
So my concern is that this is taking away some of our community voice, and we've really focused on bringing especially our student voice to committees. Our committees have always functioned as a committee of the entire group that's present and not just the board members. And I feel like the board always already gets a chance to vote at a board meeting. And to me, it's taking away the voice of some of the experts that offer input into our committees. And I'd also just like to say that I would encourage us to take a little time with new board members before we, we change everything. We have some board members that have not even attended a single committee meeting yet. So perhaps prior to changing everything, we, you know, see how things are going, and you guys kind of get to see how our committees are run now. So I would just caution us about changing things too quickly.
Can I ask why you think it would take away from students or take away from leaders in the community from participating in committee meetings?
My understanding of what you're saying is that this is how something gets moved to the work session.
Yes, so when the administration is ready to move something to the, into the work session, when the committee's done, when the committee's done listening to the community, when they're done listening to the, the people that came out and participated in the committee sessions, it would be voted on, on how the committee put that forth into the, into the work session.
But you're saying it's before board members on the committee?
Before board members and admin, correct.
Right. I'm saying that in the past, it's been the entire committee. So for instance, on our Safety and Operations Committee, we have our supervisor of operations, who is a very important voice, but he's not the chair of that committee. So he, his vote wouldn't count in terms of whether that gets moved. So he, his vote wouldn't count in terms of whether that gets moved on. To me, his voice is often more important in that committee than the board members' voices who don't have that knowledge. So when I'm sitting here at a board meeting and I'm hearing what a committee recommended, I want to know what the committee as a whole recommended based on, if it's education committee, I want to know what those curriculum supervisors thought. The board gets to vote when it comes to the board meeting. I need to hear from the people that know what's going on.
And I, and I think that process would be, wouldn't change at all. Yeah, the, the part of the committee, uh, part of the committee meeting is for board members to listen to the administration and the guests that come to these committee meetings and then to ask their questions, if they have any. And when the administration is ready to add something to the work session, this gives a little bit more of information on how the committee, the four individuals who are on that committee and the administration felt about that action. That could lead to debate in, in the work session as we talk about whether these things move over to the board item and lead to more debate. To me, debate's good. The, the school boards that do this have, um, have talked openly about how that structure is added and enhanced the committee meetings. Because now it's, it's kind of ensures that the, the, the board members do a lot more listening to the community and, and then putting their, putting their thought process to when something gets added to the work session. Dr. Campley?
I'm confused. So say there's four board members and the administrator?
Yes.
And they, they have a majority vote that they don't think it's ready to go to the work session?
Well, it's non-binding.
So then what is the point of the vote if we're, if it's a non-binding vote?
Bring contact to the work session and what the committee felt was important. There are not, not all board members on every single committee. Actually, no one's on every single committee.
Right.
So you get more context of what happened at those committee meetings, and the committee gets more context.
Aren't we getting that when we have the fact that there's supposed to be a portion of our board meeting when we discuss what happened at those committee meetings? Isn't that kind of the same thing when we're giving a summary of what's been occurring and what people have said? I don't understand why the vote would change anything. I understand you're saying it'll bring debate, but I'm just trying to figure out what would make a difference from us having a debate anyway.
It's, in my opinion, that the school districts in Pennsylvania that have done this have seen success. And success is important, and I know change is different, but the goal's to, to become an even stronger district.
Mr. Saylor?
Yeah.
This is already being done, just less formally. I mean, every one of the committee meetings I've been at, like when Mr. Weaver brings something out for finance or safety and operation, excuse me, he'll ask, are we, are board members okay with moving this forward? So this is just a more formal process for something we're already doing.
Correct.
I think some, but I think there's a part of where we need to be able to have conversation about it. A lot of these changes got made without any conversation and any true understanding of the rationale or reasoning behind it. And I think before any decisions like this should happen, we should be having conversations about it. It shouldn't be unilateral.
Well, it's not unilateral. To say that the decisions were made unilaterally would mean one person made the decision.
Did you come to the rest of the board and ask us our thoughts before you made this decision?
I spoke to board members about it. I spoke to other school districts in Pennsylvania.
You didn't speak to me.
I did not speak to you, correct?
Right, and I'm one of nine, and my opinion matters.
Correct. There seems to be an issue on how the committees were put together, what time the committee's meetings might be, and what happens at the committee meetings. I heard the issue about the committees and restructured the committees in a bipartisan form with there were two Republicans and two Democrats. All right, that was done. That was asked and that was done, correct? I'm asking that we formalize a little bit more the non-binding vote. By also having a non-binding vote, it dictates by law that we also need to make sure we're listening and hearing people from our community. I've been to a lot of committee meetings, and I think this would be a good enhancement. If you don't want to, if the board doesn't want to do it, that's up to the board to decide. You could have a vote and you can make that decision. It's perfectly fine. If you want to redo the committees, that's perfectly fine. You can redo the committees, but you're destroying the structure of an elected board president and vice president. Dr. Kolar?
So I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what you just said. I think what feels uncomfortable to some of us is that we are supposed to be a board of nine, and these are discussions that I think we should be having out in the open. I think it's very uncomfortable to feel like we're being told this is how we're doing things now moving forward, that this is the time that, like, we got an email saying the committee times have changed from 7 o'clock to 6:30, and never was I asked about my input or how that affected my schedule. I have my calendar planned out for months, you know, it just, that's a small example, and I'll make it work if I have to, but I think that we have to remember that we are nine people with schedules and opinions, and we should all be valued in what we have to say. We shouldn't be told this is how things are going moving forward. I think that's what people are asking for, is that we have this, this is a good discussion. We need to have these discussions before we just jump ahead and say these are the changes being made.
That's fair. Do you want to go through each committee, and we could vote on who the board members are assigned?
I'll say personally that I appreciate that you took the feedback and changed the committees and that, and I have no issue with what the committee assignments are. My concern is the changing of committee structure so quickly into a new board. I would like to give us some time to gel and to figure out how to work together. I also want to point out that only two committees are board committees. Those are the only committees that we're supposed to really decide how they run and what happens. The remainder of the committees are administrative committees, and it's up to them how they want to run them. And so, yes, in, in committees Mr. Weaver runs, he does tend to ask board members, are we in favor of that, to move that forward? But that's not the same way that education or wellness or other committees work. So I, I just, again...
But administrative was consulted on that, and they, they said they were okay with it.
I, I appreciate that. Again, I'm saying, give it some time. Don't rush in like a bull in a china shop and have to change everything right away. Let's, let's focus on the big picture items and not these little tit-for-tat kind of things.
Sure.
But as far as the, the time change, the reason that was proposed or suggested was because going to, with COVID and everything that's going on, people are stressed and taxed. And at committee meetings, I was hearing teachers and, um, and some administrators, not our, not Dr. Russell or Mrs. Smith, but some other principals in the schools were just saying how a 7 o'clock meeting is a real struggle for them. So that's, it was, there was no malice or, it was only to help those administrators and teachers and hopefully have them, and have the opportunity to participate more. And as far as voting, I'm, I'm not sure, Mrs. Evans-Brockett, I couldn't quite exactly hear you, but I'm wondering, when you were talking about administrators and board members, we could, we could discuss, do we, how many administrators maybe would we want to include in the vote? For me, it, I thought it was a good idea and perspective because sometimes there have been things that come out of committee and are presented to the board in a way that seems like the majority of the committee spent a lot of time on it, interacted about it, and then moved it forward. And, and sometimes I have been on those committee meetings and think, you know, wait, I'm not quite sure. It didn't feel to me, being on that committee meeting, that the collective group actually did move this forward. And, I mean, to my mind, it would just give more discussion points and more clarity, which I think would be helpful. And we've talked about that before, looking at, um, committee notes and how do we make sure that the committee notes are, um, true and checked over so that the people, we all agree that they're, they reflect what actually, um, what element the committee needs?
Yeah, Ms. White?
Thank you. Um, so I, I think for me, you know, understanding the need to evolve and change is paramount to success. I, I agree with that. I think that being dynamic and improving upon process is essential to growth. I, I don't think any one of us can, can disagree with that. I, I just, I'm confused as to why this conversation is not being had collectively in an executive session to discuss overall improvements. Because I, I've been to almost, I would say, more than 90% of every committee regarding which committee I'm actually assigned to, um, over the last two years since I've been elected. And, and I can count on one hand how many times, if at all, I've ever seen any of our newly elected, um, board members at those meetings. So I, I'm confused as to how a perception of, of inefficiency was gained by best practice in another place where I'm, only can assume that there was not actual attendance at the other district's committee meeting. But there's a perception that somehow our committee meetings are, have not been and have not moved agenda items forward in a way that is transparent and in good faith. So that's my first point. My second point, kind of on the tail end of that, is the fact that in trying to fix a problem that, in my perception, does not exist, the actual issues or problems that do exist for board participation with committees weren't even addressed or, or brought to any type of inquiry as to say, hey, how do these function right now? Are there anything in, in like a big picture? Is there anything that we can improve upon collectively? Because we all have experience and different strengths in terms of what is brought to the table, not only at every committee, but also in terms of perception of solving problems in general. Um, and one of those items is, is attendance at committees. So there is no formal process as of right now to someone on the board that chooses to not or is unable to go to a committee meeting that they're assigned to. What happens in that instance? So you're looking to implement a procedure to have a vote with four members that are assigned to a committee, and there's a real possibility that those four people are not going to be the ones that are at the committee meeting. So, in, in some fashion. So, so where's the contingency plan associated with that? And where is the procedure in place to assign the four bodies of board members that show up? When some board members show up just to listen and, and not participate as a board member, there, there's just, there's just more than one angle of a straightforward, and this is how it's going to be now. Um, and I think without having, um, true historical experience, being a participant in our committee process and working with our administration and working with our community members and listening to the speakers, there, there's really no lack of efficiency in the committee process other than the fact that we were not consulted on making any improvements. That's a huge issue. And so, you know, to not speak to those things, it's, um, it's only, it's short-sighted. Like, it's nice that you want to change it. I don't even necessarily agree that it would, in the long term, be a bad change because I think it would give context. I don't think that it's, I think it gives ownership to, to reporting out what happens at the committees. I think there, there are positive things about it, but you, there is, there is no context to solicit information of other things that could be improved upon in making something better that, you're fixing a problem that doesn't exist and ignoring problems that do exist, I guess is, is my whole point. And, you know, to Mrs. Evans-Brockett's point, um, you know, she's been going to committee meetings a lot longer than I have at this point. I, I, again, don't understand how you can speak to something that you really have not been an active part on. And I don't mean that at any one individual person. I just mean that in general, how anyone can speak to something that they've never been an active participant in. And, and that goes down to the committee assignments, a piece of my feedback. So with regards to that, at the reorganization meeting, when a conversation was loosely stated as to make known what your interests and what your strengths are, if the response back was that the committees that you were being assigned previously, you were felt, feeling like you were the most comfortable on and that your strengths met the, the committee criteria on, was for the remainder of the year, taken out of context, we, we are a governing school board that works from August to June. So I, I'm confused as to how words can so severely get misinterpreted and twisted to fit a narrative that seemingly has no rhyme or reason with, with common sense strengths and weaknesses of various board members being contributing factors to different committees. So, so I personally, although the committees are balanced, and again, to be clear, I go to 90-plus percent of committees regardless of whether or not I'm on them because I do want to hear the community, and I do want to hear our administrators, and I do want to have the knowledge firsthand and not have it be interpreted to me in a way that maybe is not the way that I would personally interpret it. I don't feel as though these committees take into account the strengths of all of our individual board members. That's all.
I, I would say that, you know, when you're putting committees together, um, some people are on a committee that, not everyone can be on every committee they want to be on. Purpose of putting the committees together was to, uh, after listening to the feedback of board members, um, is to put together a fair and balanced committee approach. And I understand that there are people that are not on committees that they wanted to be on, myself included, right? There were committees I wanted to be on that I'm not on. You know, when you have nine individuals and you're trying to get two and two for each committee to make it fair and balanced, that means not everyone is going to be on every committee. And, uh, you know, sometimes there's just nothing you can do about that. The committees will put together, taking people's strengths, and also, uh, you know, being put on different committees is not necessarily a bad thing. Fluctuation and change and different viewpoints and, and different ideologies are a good thing to, uh, to have good debate and, and good thought process. And that was the purpose of the structures of the committees. Dr. Campley?
I think, you know, committees aside, I think it's, it's more of a, a global concern that there needs to be more discussion. You need input from all nine. To send an email and state a time of when a committee is going to be, that's not how it should work. I understand the rationale that Mrs. Mares gave and the feedback that she was hearing from other individuals. However, none of that information was conveyed in anywhere near the explicit nature that she did it just this evening. I think that's an important piece. If we're supposed to gel and we're supposed to find trust with one another, the only way to find trust with one another is to have open, transparent conversations. way to find trust with one another is to have open, transparent conversation. We cannot do that if we're getting emails that say, this is the time, this is what's going to happen. We need to have conversation. We may not agree, that is fine. We don't have to agree. But having open conversation to hear others' perspectives, you just said, healthy debate is good. I think the feedback is, is that you just, in your first couple of weeks, you didn't allow for healthy debate. And, and in doing so, it created this distrust. And it also set up a situation where it's like, okay, they were doing these things for all these years and we're just going to come in and we're going to change it. And it's that almost that feeling like, you know, I'm going to take it from the education perspective. Whenever I've worked with a new principal, the new principal did not come in and switch classrooms around and, and change everything up and throw everybody on their heads. In the first year, they take the time to get to know the, the climate and they take the time to get to know the culture of the school and they slowly take mental notes of what needs to change, what their vision is, how their vision gels with what the rest of the school's culture and vision is, and they start to mesh and they start to build. We haven't even been here, we're just now at a month, and there's already all this like, let's turn it upside down. And I think, you know, just some respect of criticism and constructive criticism is, slow down and take time to have constructive times to talk and debate and slowly build this team together so that we can make decisions as a group moving forward and have that feeling that we all have a say versus just getting emails where we're told.
Well, so, just a few things. I've been going to committee meetings since 2014, off and on. Uh, when my, when my son first started, uh, you know, first grade at Skidback, right? Off and on, when the South thing happened, I went to a lot of South meetings. When the TERF was, you know, happening, I attended a lot of TERF meetings. I, I've been going to committee meetings for a long time in the school district. I don't go to every committee meeting because I was just, you know, just some dude. Just, I went to the committee meetings that were interesting to me at that time. Previous presidents have done like a Google Doc and said, hey, what, what, what committees are you interested in? It's literally the same thing I did, except I didn't do a Google Doc. I just sent out an email and said, hey, let me know what committees you're interested in. Right? It, it's pretty clear that the committees were going to change. There were, there were holes in committees because board members aren't here anymore. They needed to be filled, right? And so, committees were going to change. And that's, we're not, we're not waiting to change committees till June.
This isn't about the commit, put the committees aside, Mr. Saylor. We're talking about the way the committees are being run, the time of the committees. Those things could have waited. They did not need to be changed.
I didn't interrupt you. I then went to the administration, to Dr. Russell, and to the administration with an idea. I didn't say we're doing this. I said, here's an idea. This happens at other school districts. I spoke to my PSBA rep. I, I gave them the idea. I said, hey, what do you think about me talking to my superintendent about it? They said, talk to the superintendent. So, that's what I did. I proposed an idea to the superintendent. She then mentioned that, or HR rep, has actually been part of school districts that have done that and received his feedback. And everyone thought it was good. This was not unilateral. And I understand change is hard. I'm the board president for one year. I'm not waiting till June to try to make some changes. Inefficiencies or not, I'm not saying that anything's inefficient. I'm saying there are always ways to make things better, and that's a good thing. And in terms of how that's communicated, I, I, I have attempted to get to talk to people and only some people will call me. And I will, I want to talk to everybody, right? But they want to have to talk back to me. Conversations are two ways, not one way, right? I've received the feedback and I understand. Now, let's talk about the time change, this, from six, from seven o'clock to 6:30. As we see on here, it says 7:00 PM. It wasn't changed because Dr. Russell heard feedback and I heard feedback, so we left it at seven o'clock. We can talk about it. We could talk about why that happened. We can even talk about the change in the committee structure in terms of having a non-binding vote. I'm still curious why anyone, Mrs. White actually said, it, it does make sense, but don't do it now. Well, if it makes sense, then why not do it now? Why wait to do something that actually makes sense? Dr. Russell? Uh, Dr. Campley, go ahead.
Or Dr. Kohler, I'm sorry.
So, again, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I just want to say, I do think this is a good conversation and that's what I was asking for. I was just asking that if you have some changes in mind and you have rationale for them, great. Let's talk about it and let's come to these decisions together. You know, hearing now the rationale behind why it might make sense to move a committee time earlier, fine, I'm for that if that's what would be helpful for administration. But that's not how it was presented to us. It was just an email saying this is what's happening. So, I'm just asking that moving forward, we work on our communication, we respect that there's nine of us involved and that we do this as a group. You know, I don't want to be, feel like I'm being told this is how things need to be. I want to feel like I'm part of a decision that's being made together as a group.
So, I, I appreciate the way, um, some of your feedback has been articulated and, and really, I feel better about the fact that we're having the conversation openly because I do know that some of these things were unsettling because there was not that open discussion. So, I think it's really healthy, as some of you have mentioned. I do want to point out that I would also like to work on facilitating some more of this communication. So, I take some responsibility for that around the discussion around the non-voting, or the, excuse me, the non-binding vote, as well as the time change. So, so I need to really be in tune with that now as some of these ideas are proposed to administration to make sure that they come to us as a group. As I looked back and researched, there have been conversations over time about at least assignments for committees. So, I certainly want to continue that. And, and so, know that the feedback that was provided to me also prompted me to reflect upon how I can support moving things forward in a way that works for the entire board. I'd also like to suggest, Ryan Moran is the administrator who experienced that non-binding vote as part of a finance committee, for example. Maybe it would be helpful, he shared some documentation with me. Maybe it would be helpful to hear Ryan explain his experience and his views on that process. I can understand how a vote, or at least how the board views the consensus of the committee and that translates to their vote, how that can be helpful in the work session because we have had a few situations where that was confusing. And maybe there were different views that ended up being presented and questions about the outcomes, et cetera. Maybe we pilot it. Maybe we try it with just finance instead of all committees. Maybe that, as a board committee, is an example of where we can start to employ that process and see how it works. That's an idea. Ryan has, Mr. Moran has some very valuable experience and he's got some documentation. Maybe that would also enlighten us and help us to understand even more deeply how it might be helpful as part of that setting in moving items forward to the works, to the work session agenda.
I think it's a great idea. Why don't we try it in finance and policy for now? That, that work for everybody and we'll see how it works. And if we feel that it's, it's adding content and context to items that get moved to the work session, then we can move it on to the other committees.
And I'd like to add that I think, uh, Mrs. White had a, a good concern that maybe we could figure out a way to address in that, what if somebody is not able to attend a meeting? Right now, there's not a requirement. So, that is kind of a hiccup with this plan as far as, so, maybe we need like some sort of email chain or like who's next up kind of thing, just to ensure that we have representation of all board members for those spots at that meeting.
I mean, I have always assumed that the committees are, I mean, listen, nothing, you don't have to go to everything, right? But if you're on a committee, you kind of have to go to it unless you're sick. That's always been my assumption. It might not be written down, but, you know, if they're, I, listen, I, I expect if you're on a committee, you go to that committee. And if you can't go because you have something that, you know, I got a coach that day or I'm traveling or work, you find, you have to find a replacement. Like, that's the goal. And not just find a replacement. It's not like, hey, Tammy, I can't make it tonight, can you go? It's, let me brief you on what's going on. Let me tell you what, you know, I'm concerned about. Can you, can you go in my stead? I mean, that's, that's how the board should be, that's how the board should work and I, I assume that's what the board has done prior. Um, I kind of know that, I know what Matt's done that prior. If he can't make something, uh, there have been times I've seen Mr. House, uh, there in, in, in his stead. If there is an issue that board members don't go to committee meetings, um, and, and that's a historical issue, um, frankly, that's our job. Like, you know, when the election ended and I met with Sarah, you have your committees that you're going to be on, you got your board meeting, your work session. And I, I, I walked away going, that's right, I got to do that. And I, I knew that even prior to the election. So, if there's a historical issue that board members don't go to committee meetings, tell me now because we'll just put someone else on the committee because it's really important that everyone goes. That's key. Dr. Kohler?
So, I will say, historically, it's kind of been all over the place. I've been at committee meetings where I've been the only board person to show up and I had no idea that others weren't coming. And I've been at committee meetings where consistently the four representatives show up. But I think the problem is there hasn't really been a formal procedure. Some board members are good about sending an email saying, hey, I can't make it on Wednesday, can someone take my place? Some people do it informally, but it's never really been a procedure that's been followed very well. So, I do think it might be worth considering.
We're all grouped down in fours. We could start our private conversations if someone can't go to find a replacement. And not just finding a replacement, making sure that replacement reads the minutes, knows what you know. It, it's, it's, uh, it's literally our job to do that. So, um, we, we don't have to put a policy item to it, but it's just a, you know, as a common sense that we should be communicating with each other at these committee meetings, especially if we're not, not able to go. It would look really poor if, you know, we, if community members went to a committee meeting and only saw one board member. I would be confused why that's happening too. I would want to know what's the point of being on the board? The board is not, you know, that would be strange. There's multiple commitments to being on an elected board member, not just a business and work session.
Maybe I can also offer, we had spent some time developing board operating guidelines, which are like the administrative regulations. And maybe I can go back to that one. I'm not, I don't remember exactly if there was a committee one.
That could be in the board, board goals.
Right, it could, yes.
That should be a, Mrs. Mares, that should be a board goal.
Yep, I hear you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I think that's a great suggestion.
So, I think either, you know, a board goal or an operating guideline, there's a place for us to help all to understand what the expectation is and what to do if for some reason we can't meet the expectation or fulfill our obligation to, to attend a committee. So, we, we can work on that and maybe I can share some of the ideas that have emerged tonight in this week's memo so that the conversation continues. I, I think Ms. White also had her hand up. I just wanted to offer her that chance. Ms. White, did you have a comment you wanted to offer?
All, all good. No, all, all, all good, thank you.
Great.
Anyone else have any discussions? And I know, Matt, I've talked to you about this and probably talked to everyone about it. It's important, there are really, really exceptional people in our community that we should be inviting out to committee meetings. I am disappointed that people don't go to committee meetings. And I'm not talking about us in general. I think, and Sarah, and Ms. Evans-Brockett, one of your conversations, you told me you were the only community member to attend meetings for a long period of time. And that's sad. We get a lot of people coming out and talk when they angry, but you're like, the pork's really made at the committee meetings. That's when the administration can really hear from the community. So, you know, I've gone out, I know I've already, I've already, uh, connected our safety and operations team with some, um, people in the community that, uh, do school safety and are involved in, in those types of, of those types of issues. I know, uh, Matt and I have already talked to some local finance people to come to finance meetings. Those things are, are really, really important. There are a lot of experts in our community that we got to drag out of their house and, and, and get them to listen to what's happening in their school district, whether they have a kid in the district or not, they're paying the taxes. Mr. Fountain?
How is, how is the, um, advertising, I guess would be the best way to put it. How is the advertising done right now for the community to get involved and step up and come out and support the committees? How are they solicited?
There, you know, it's on the website. Facebook will do it. But unless there's like a, a really big, like when South had the issue, that meeting was packed. But then it dwindled, it did. It was packed like at first and then it, and then it became like three or four key stakeholders. Uh, TERF had a lot of people and then it became a fundraising apparatus. You know, we have to figure out a way, look, we're not going to get 100 people to a committee meeting and probably don't even want 100 people to a committee meeting, right? But we want, we want, we want people there and not just when there's a problem. You know, we want to really get their feedback on, on the issues and not just the heavy issues. Um, every, every aspect that's, that's there. That's what we have to figure out a way to do. You know, we've never done a, not to, let me rephrase that. Have we ever done an email to the community with, hey, here are our committees for the year and, you know, just, you know, this is when committee meetings are and you're, you're invited?
So, I, I, we have, but it's been many years since we've done that. So, I was thinking, as Mr. Fountain posed his question, this may also be something that we reinvent in terms of communication and the how of it. And we can, we can brainstorm and follow up as an administrative team with Dr. Parr on how we might actually entice and invite individuals from our community to participate in the committees where they really have some value to offer. So, we can sort of go out and go after that a little bit better again. We've been doing the same thing for a long time. As Mr. Saylor mentioned, sorry about that. We posted on the calendar on the website, so there's an announcement for a meeting. There's not necessarily as much context as could be helpful to let people know. And I, I don't know if all people realize they can come to committees. You know, they may feel funny about that if they're not aware of how the process works. So, we can work on that as an administrative team and sort of reinvent that communication, that marketing effort and see if we can't draw some people.
Will you make sure that the agenda items are on there too? I mean, I think if community members know what's, what's going to be on the agenda, maybe something more interesting to them or they might be an expert on that subject.
I wonder if I could just ask, you know, I want to offer, when, when Mr. Saylor, Mrs. Mares, Mrs. Smith and I spoke about the committee time, it was certainly appealing to administration to shift committee times to 6:30. However, I recognize the significance of the conversation. So, I, I'm curious about where we are as a board in thinking about that at this point. It, it's represented right now on the sheet, on the table as seven o'clock. What is the board's preference at this point? And, and what would you like to talk about in terms of that, um, if anything? So that we could bring closure to that aspect of the conversation as well.
So, my concern was when I first started on the board, committee times were at 6:30. And one of the reasons we pushed it back was because of feedback from community members. A lot of parents said to us that they couldn't get to meetings easily at 6:30. They were busy making dinner or getting younger kids ready for bed or still getting home from work and long commutes. So, we took that community feedback and that was, by understanding, one of the main reasons we made that change. And also for board members who were working and had long commutes. So, you know, if 6:30 is the desired time, I'll make it work. But I do think that it's worth seeing what works for our community. If we're saying we want community members there, we have to make it accessible for them.
I mean, I, I just want to be very clear that administration certainly likes the idea of a half an hour earlier. It's not about us. It is about our community. So, um, really.
This is Kim. I have a question. I wonder, I don't know that we would want to survey because hearing Dr. Kohler say that, that sounds positive, but my question would be, how many people are really coming to the committee meetings? It's not many, for the most part, um, education is usually really full. So, it's, how do we figure out? I mean, my vote would be to support the teachers and administrators and principals and some of our administrators, a fair amount live really. And some of our administrators, a fair amount, live really far away. But I don't know if there's any way we could get a pulse.
The problem with a survey is you don't have scientific actual data unless you have 95% of the participants do the survey, and you have 85% plus one answer. And I doubt you're going to get 85% of people say 6:30 and/or 7. You're going to still, you're going to be stuck going, I'm going to flip a coin, right? Yeah, Mr. Dor.
I was fine, I made 7 o'clock work, but I did notice a drop off once we changed safety and operations from 6:30 to 7. We had a drop off of community members showing up. So I don't know if there's a correlation, but we definitely had less people once the time changed.
The people who historically have come to the committee meetings and have sent out an email to somebody for the last four months, I don't know if that's too much work and just say, this is what we're thinking. What's your feedback?
I was going to say something similar, even if we don't do the emails, the next, you know, the committee meetings for this month, we could at each meeting take a poll of the people who come to it and see what the feedback is.
We could leave it at 7 this month and ask them.
Right, and then come back and have that conversation of what each of the committees found. Obviously, we can't have half the committees 6:30, half the committees 7. We have to have some sort of consistency, but we could at least get the feedback and have some open conversation around it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
That concludes my section if there's not any other discussion.
Is Tom C. still here? Tom, I apologize, I'm Chimalowski? I've been thinking about it since I saw the name on there at 7 o'clock.
No worries. She was, she went from Henry to Chimalowski, so we're all, she's got that burden. I'll try to get through this for you guys here, so, and ladies. So Tom Chimalowski, parent of two students in the school district, I'm comfortable having uncomfortable conversations. Some of you are doctors, you and I both know, people die every day. They're also born every day. Someone will die from heart disease, diabetes, trauma, and obviously COVID. People have passed away today even from COVID. More people will die tomorrow, the next day, the day after that, next week. Someone in 20 years is going to die from a new COVID variant. COVID is here to stay. COVID is not going away. So what I need to ask of you is we need leadership from you. I need you to step forward and make a permanent solution to our issue. There's new variants every day. The community needs leadership. We don't need squabbling. We're at odds. It's obvious we're going to stay divided. What I need from you is to give us the power to help our own families, a parent choice. I need to be able to make the decision for my own family. I can't be having someone up in a bureaucratic office telling me what's best for my family. I don't care what letter they have next to their name, if it's an R, an I, a D, an L, whatever it is. And I also don't care about any fancy alphabet soup that comes next to their name. Nobody knows what's best for my family. Nobody knows what's best for your family. Nobody knows our situation. Some people have immunocompromised children, elders. Some people have mental health students. Some people have special needs. Hell, we even have athletes. Everyone's different, and the best way to help the community move forward and get out of the squabble is to give parent choice to the students. It's the only way forward that basically makes the biggest compromise. To me, yesterday's decision was not a compromise, it was more of a mandate. And mandates don't get us anywhere. Just for instance, to give perspective, you know, do we have a community health mandate manager for vacations? When kids go to the shore, do we mandate that they're not allowed to go in the ocean? Because kids go in the ocean, they might die from a shark attack. One out of 3 million, or even worse, they might drown. That's one out of 1,200 kids, or I shouldn't say kids, but people who enter the ocean and flood to drown. There's risk every day. Everything that we do, there's risk. We take calculated risks to live our lives. I wouldn't tell people to stop riding a motorcycle, driving a bus, getting in an airplane. I live my life accordingly. Let me assess the risk that I'm willing to take. If I put my family first and I say, this is the best, this is best for my family, that in turn makes the community safer. If every family puts their needs first, then in turn, we make the best steps forward for our community. A one step, or once medical treatment for all does not work. One, just a blanket statement policy for everybody. That doesn't save the most people, that doesn't help the most people. What helps the most people is individual families making the best decisions for themselves. I know this is voted on, but I don't care about that. In three weeks, I need you guys to make a permanent decision. Going forward, it needs to be parent choice. Thank you.
Trinity? You said you wanted to speak at the end?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Hello again. Trinity Linville, student at PV High School, yet again. I wanted to come back up here and reinstate what I said before. As a person with an exemption, if you vote to eliminate the exemption, such as people as I, will have a harder time in school. I used to get lots of panic attacks all the time with these masks, and it's even hard to wear one right now as I'm speaking. I cannot tell you how scary it is not to be able to breathe in gym class because us students are forced to wear them during it and walking through the hallway. I've always felt, I've always felt like the odd one out when I'm not wearing a mask because everyone else is wearing a mask in the school, and I'm really the only one that doesn't. And I know a lot of kids who could use an exemption, like me, but are scared to be outed by their peers. I honestly believe that a lot of parents don't know how to get an exemption form either. And I can't say I understand how you believe that masking young children would be appropriate in this situation. Masks should be optional, that's my opinion. As we, the people, need a vote from you guys because if we keep waiting and waiting, nothing will change. COVID is not going away, and keeping on masks won't do anything. We've tried to do masks for two years, and it's not getting rid of it, nor will it ever. We need to move on and build our future. We can't just push back the inevitable. As a teenager myself, I know that we can't save everyone. It's just not possible, it's truth. We can't go on doing the same things and expecting a different outcome. I honestly hate being in front of this kind of audience. However, I needed to come out here and talk about this because honestly, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night knowing now that I did nothing. I needed to make sure that you just don't pass this for another three weeks. So please vote and make masks a choice. Don't make this drag out more than needed. I thank you for considering the choice of having masks and making the vote. Thank you for having me and listening to me. I have, I hope that you all have a good day. And hopefully you guys don't get reprimanded by people. Thank you.
Comments by board members, Ms. Evans-Brockett? Dr. Kohler? Oh, I'm sorry. Dawn, I apologize.
Dondi Fury-Trapborough. I hung out a little bit because I started to get a couple more messages from parents, and I wanted to share some of what they shared with me tonight. I just had a mom reach out to me in the past hour, show me pictures of her child's mask. This is why I stayed here to speak again. I don't know if you can see that, their blood-filled mask. It's a picture that she just showed me. She said this is how her daughter comes home every day. That doesn't look healthy to me. This is what happens when some children wear a mask. Some of them cannot get assigned exemption from a doctor. This is heartbreaking. Another friend of mine told me that this happens to her child, and she left the district. This evening, I also had another mom reach out to me and tell me that her daughter has developed such a panic disorder because of these mitigation measures that it is all she can do to get her daughter into this building in the morning. Actually, the high school. She said she has panic attacks, passed out in school, vomited in her mask. What do we call this? It's called physical and emotional harm to a child. Like Elisa said earlier, there are many different types of abuse that people suffer from. I believe that this is the type of story maybe that Keenan had heard of, that many parents have heard of. This should be a conversation on this stage if you think you have the authority to mandate these for our children. And it really, it really isn't as much of a conversation as it should be. The exemptions. I was also made aware of many parents who have stated that their concerns for an exemption haven't been addressed when it comes to their children because of not being able to get that doctor's signature. I don't believe it's been taken into consideration the way it's been explained here tonight after the people that have reached out to me. I also heard a board member talk about how to differentiate between a child with a true medical condition who requires an exemption and one who just wants to have that privilege. The definition of privilege, having a special right or an advantage, are we that far gone that we're really defining a child's right to breathe as a privilege? It's their birthright. Kim mentioned the possibility of a parent exemption. I think that's a great idea. Many districts have allowed this. Any child or parent stating that their child is suffering should be enough. They should be taken seriously. It's shameful to hear a conversation that a child would be deemed privileged by asking for an exemption for wanting to breathe while they learn. It's a human birthright to breathe unobstructed. The last thing I wanted to mention is that parents have not been provided with any information that state that masking is safe, let alone effective. It's called informed consent. I know Mr. Subers expressed last night that it's his opinion that the board has this authority. Again, opinion is not a law. I would like, I think it would make sense to provide parents something in writing where it states at the court of law that you do have this authority to restrict a child's breathing. I don't want to hear it's part of a uniform. I've been told that before, I think it's ridiculous. I have to sign a paper when my child goes on a field trip when I'm aware of the risk. Why has this not happened to our children that are wearing masks? One last question. The brave speaker before me, the young girl, just said that kids are being masked in gym. Why is this happening still?
Thank you, Dawn. Is there anyone else that likes to, well, there's like four people. Ms. Evans-Brockett, any comments? Dr. Kohler?
So I don't usually sit here and make many board comments because I believe that our role as board members is to listen to the administration and community, to ask questions and to make decisions without giving speeches about our personal opinions. However, I want to address comments made last night and also sent to the board in some emails referring to masking as a form of child abuse. As someone who has worked with victims of trauma and abuse for over 20 years, I'm highly offended by that comparison. I have worked with the Department of Youth and Family Services in counties with some of the highest rates of child sexual and physical abuse in our county, in our country. I've seen children brought in after being burned, beaten, stabbed, starved, drugged, raped, and even chained to furniture, left unclothed, unfed, left to die. I could not sleep last night thinking about the caseworkers, doctors, therapists, foster parents, and other adults who spend their lives helping these abused children. More importantly, I cannot stop wondering how those abused children would feel if someone told them that being asked to wear a mask during a global pandemic was equivalent to the horrors they have experienced. Currently, I work with adult survivors of trauma. I cannot imagine suggesting to any of my patients that the PTSD they are working through is equivalent to the challenges of being asked to wear a mask in public. We can disagree about whether masks are effective. We can even disagree about whether masks can be mandated. However, I hope we can all agree that child abuse is a very serious issue in our society. It is not something to take lightly, and it is not appropriate to make flippant accusations of abuse. If this board is going to be effective, we need to work together and focus on the serious decisions we were elected to make. We can't distract ourselves with long speeches about our personal beliefs and agendas, and we definitely should not be calling each other names and making false accusations. Moving forward, I urge all of you to think about our roles as school board members and what we were elected to accomplish. I ask you to be a better example for our community by modeling respectful and nonpartisan behavior. That is the only way for our district to heal from the division and hurt that has been an unfortunate consequence of this pandemic.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fountain? Oh, sorry, Mr. Fountain? No, Dr. Campley?
I just have three quick things. The one, there was a public comment about the chorus concert. And I know when the Health and Safety Plan was passed, Dr. Russell had specifically mentioned that the part of it was the mindful thought of one step at a time moving forward, and optional activities should come with the strongly recommended. But the chorus concert, it did mention it's a graded activity, so it's not really optional. And I wonder if there needs to be an exception made for that particular event given that students are expected to be there and should be afforded the same safety precautions that they get during the day. So that's the first one. The second thing is, I really would hope, Dr. Russell, that maybe next week you would have some sort of data or proposal about a matrix in the event that COVID surges. Hopefully, they'll go down. I really, I would love to not wear a mask. But if they don't, or if we, you know, are in a situation where they can go off and then we need to put them back on again for a period of time and back and forth, I really would like to see some sort of matrix taking into consideration not just transmission rates, because I think you made a good point of our transmission rates are often high, but also looking at hospitalization rates and what the burden is on our hospitals and our ERs, and some of the different other factors such as vaccination rates and things, and come up with some sort of a matrix that we could talk about so that we're not in the 11th hour in the event for some reason, January 21st doesn't look like a good day to go mask optional. And then the third thing is, I do want the board to start having conversations and considerations with what Dr. Weston, actually, I think he left, but he had brought this up, and I've always been in favor of having Zoom as an option. I feel like it is the most equitable option for families. That yes, they can submit board comment ahead of time and have it read, and yes, they can watch and see it on YouTube. However, there are times that things are said and conversations come up, and it spurs in them, just as we've had some speakers here who weren't originally planning to speak but heard something that they felt compelled to have a conversation about and give a comment on. Unfortunately, when we only have a YouTube option that does not afford those families that opportunity to be able to speak, and I think it's a disservice because there are legitimate, again, people who cannot come out to the meetings, whether they're trying to take care of their children, whether they have a disability of themselves and they can't actually physically get here. I just think we need to start having conversations. We all hate COVID, nobody likes it, but there are some silver linings, and one of them is learning technology and finding ways to make things accessible to all. I think Zoom is an option we need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Campley. Of course you can.
So, Dr. Campley, I just wanted to respond to the concert comment because that's an important one. That has been addressed, I believe, if you're referring to the East group, that was brought to the attention of the principal and clarified that students would not be held accountable or their grade would not be impacted negatively for choices around that. So I'll follow up to be sure about that, but I wanted you to know that question has been raised by others also. And going back to the Zoom comment that you made, I'd also like to take some time to talk to administration and Mr. Ganesh about that and the blending of Zoom with YouTube, as well as talk to the board a little bit more because there was certainly a hesitation on our part to promote that hybrid approach because we really are trying to move forward and not give the impression that it is something that we need to rely upon. Our teachers are really uncomfortable with that, so we don't want to give the impression that it's a possibility of us going back. However, I agree with you, we did see increased engagement with Zoom. And so for some, it was really convenient. They could, they could engage from the comfort of their own home. Who doesn't like that once in a while? So I'd like to have some conversations and follow up with the board, if that's okay, and include Mr. Ganesh in those discussions. So I'll, more information to come.
Mr. Keenan?
I just wanted to mention that we've been talking a lot about leadership and getting through the pandemic. And part of the reason, I just mentioned, just to leave this out there. there tonight for, you know, something that we've all been thinking about, part of what has been missing from the beginning has been an accurate appraisal of the negative consequences that come with the protective measures that we have been putting in place and whether the cure is worse than the disease and, you know, where it may be and where it might not be. And of course, this whole thing sprung on our leaders that were in office at the time the pandemic came on with no warning and no one was ready. A lot of people, the people that ran, including Dr. Campley and Dawn and Jason and myself, had an opportunity to see the pandemic from the outside and to run on a platform with a little bit more objective view of the pandemic. And in getting through this, we have to lead the people through it. And one note, I don't have long to go. Little things, like I read about the influenza pandemic of 1918, 19. It went on for a couple of seasons, sort of like this one. And an early term coined by the doctor that was in charge of the Chicago school system was flu phobia. He described the circumstance of paranoia that was created by a pandemic and that, and its real effects on people and families. And that there are a lot of people with a lot of fear and we are going to have to bring them back into the fold. And we are going to have to offer them, I don't know what we can do. I'd like to personally offer them counseling or not even formal counseling, not to say they need counseling, but sessions where we all get together and talk about our experiences in the pandemic. You know, whereas I'm comfortable going anywhere, anytime without a mask, you know, people might not be that way for years. Anyway, I appreciate all the support that I've gotten. And a lot of people miss, of course, misheard, mischaracterized, miscategorized my actual words and actual statements, which is to be expected. And a lot of people heard the words that I actually said. The student representative said I spoke for 20 minutes on those topics, didn't even mention that I spent most of the time talking about the Supreme Court decision. Can't imagine, you know, how that could have been overlooked. But nevertheless, I'm, you know, being labeled as a right wing extremist and, you know, things like that. That's to be expected. I expected it 100%. But I am a person who believes in the Constitution. I'm a person who believes in individualism, in personal responsibility. I'm a person that believes that America is the best country on the planet and that we are free to make decisions for our own children and that, as I stated yesterday, that the imposition of the mask mandates are not legal. And just to make it a little more simpler as to why, to draw it back to the one point, there's no government emergency authorization right now. And there's no instruction from the state. And as you have heard, just to put it in a little perspective, the Montgomery County Board of Health is backing off and laying off and reducing their requirements. And for good reason. And we should definitely continue on this path to reduce the requirements. Thank you.
Mr. Dorr? Dr. Russell? I just have wished you and your team a lot of luck. January is going to be tough for everybody. I know everyone's working hard to keep doing a great job at our school district. Was really proud that we were open today. I know people closed because it was snowing out. I knew we were getting no snow. Friday, that's another thing. We're going to get some snow on Friday. Again, wishing everyone a happy and healthy New Year. I really appreciate all the comments today for the board meeting. And hopefully I'll be here Monday if I don't break my neck this weekend attending the snowboard for the first time in my life. Just note, there was no executive session today and this meeting, oh, hold on one second, 10.03. Don't need to read it correct. So I'm just going to remind everyone about the notice of the video recording disclaimer. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.